Oh, boy. Yes, it is. My apologies for being a little behind here. Let's get over here.
They've done something to the volume. It's loud.
It's really loud.
It's good.
Okay. All right. Can you hear me out there? Okay. I don't need to yell. All right. Hello, everybody, and good evening. And thank you for attending our special meeting today on what's going to be all things homeless here in Placerville and hopefully the county. I want to thank a few of our people for coming. Chief Cordero for being here and kind of enlightening us a little bit from his perspective on fire. And of course, Chief Rinn. And I want to thank everybody here that has an interest in helping and moving this along. I see a lot of familiar faces out there that we've -- this is certainly not the first time we've had this conversation. And so I want to thank you all for being here and helping us think through this process we're looking at here. At this time, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order if we can get the roll call, please.
Mayor Thomas?
Here.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Councilmember Borelli?
Here.
Councilmember No?
Here.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, announcements and presentations to the public. Presentation by Housing Eldorado Frank Porter.
So, thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, previously, we talked about having this presentation at our previous council meeting. For various reasons, that didn't work out. So today, we have that presentation, and we have Frank Porter and Charlie. Charlie, I forgot your last name. I apologize.
McDonald.
McDonald, that's right. I knew it. I just couldn't. Anyway, so thank you both for being here. And with that, I'll turn the time over to Frank and Charlie for their presentation.
Thank you very much, and we greatly appreciate the invitation to talk with the council as you deliberate some actions for finding some good solutions to the -- or better solutions for the homeless situation in our city, in your city. I'm Frank Porter. I'm a retired school principal and school superintendent. I've lived in the county since 1975. As a superintendent, I dealt with the homeless issue with homeless students and homeless families and worked as a superintendent for many years trying to address the problem from that vantage point. In my retirement, this has become my project and my passion is to help our county address the problem of homelessness and affordable housing, which are inextricably linked, as you well know. And so I've been working with groups on the Western Slope for the past, actually throughout the county, for the last two years. Because there are a lot of good work going on in the county over the last several years, quite a few years, to try and address the problem. It's just gotten bigger and bigger, as you well know, and we're continuing to try and find ways to address it. So I commend the city for taking the step of actively considering some new options. And we hope today we appreciate the invitation to share some of our research and ideas about some of what some of those options might look like. But first, a little bit about Housing Eldorado. We are a brand-new nonprofit that was formed about eight months ago out of an urgent need for winter shelter for the homeless on our West Slope. As many of you probably know, Nomadic Shelter Ministries has been providing homeless shelter for the last -- in the winter months on an interim basis for the last about nine years. And so because of COVID, the churches could not operate those programs, and they were -- there was very apparent that there was an urgent need to come up with some option. So we were called upon to quickly rally and come up with a project. Charlie will describe that pathways project for you in just a little bit. I should mention also that I'm co-presenting with me as Charlie. I've gotten to know Charlie McDonald and come to deeply respect the work that the Upper Room has been doing for years in -- on the Western Slope, addressing the needs of the homeless. And I'm delighted to call him my partner in this project, and we're delighted to be here. But Housing Eldorado was formed to create and promote affordable housing solutions and support services that nurture individuals and families while encouraging self-sufficiency. It's an important term on the Western Slope because we firmly believe that along with addressing these solutions, the big pathway is to get people to self-sufficiency, not to put Band-Aids on things as much as humanly possibly to design programs that are going to lead to that self-sufficiency. We are a new nonprofit. The Eldorado Community Foundation is providing us with organizational development support, fundraising assistance, and fiscal management. We're delighted and honored they've been doing that for us. We've been building on the experience from the past, and you'll recognize in that list of organizations, the Upper Room I mentioned earlier is a key partner with us in our efforts, and they've been doing food and nutrition programs, obviously, wound care, education, navigation, and now actually they're doing rental assistance services. The Pathways Winter Lodging Program, you'll hear about in just a little bit, was a partnership with Green Valley Church that just finished up in end of March, early April. We also draw on our leadership, and you'll see that in the next slide, the Interfaith Nomadic Shelter Organization. Basically, many of their group leaders folded into Housing Eldorado, just like Community Hanktown Haven, former leadership there, and brought their experience and their expertise with them. So they're on our board. And then we have members of the Western Slope Coalition on Affordable Housing and Homelessness. And also, we've been very closely working with Sean Decraine in particular, but Marshall Hospital around Project Room Key, and so we have garnered that kind of experience also. This is -- and it's in your pack. I know it's probably hard to read up there, but this is our Board of Directors, and you'll probably recognize many names up there. We have a very -- we are a totally nonprofit or volunteer organization. We have a very active working board and very active committees, and those committees are the ones that are getting the work done, as you well know, for most nonprofit groups like ours. Our first project was the Pathways Winter Lodging Program. We thought it was good for you to hear a little about from Charlie because the Upper Room really was the one that drove that in partnership with the Green Valley Church. We provide fundraising, a lot of the backend support, but Charlie and the Upper Room and Julia Hackett were really the key leaders in that. So I'm going to turn it over to Charlie. Just press that.
You want to do that for me?
You want to do it?
Yeah. That's too much for me to keep track of. Good afternoon. Thank you. It's an honor to be here and to speak to the council and the mayor and the chief and my friends and all my friends back here. This is not my gift, public speaking. My gift is working in the trenches, working with the broken and marginalized in this community. So I'm not as eloquent as other people are, but I will try to get through this. First of all, I am the executive director of the Upper Room Dining Hall. I've been the director for three years, and I hope that in my time there that we've taken it from an organization that wasn't appreciated, that thought was causing more problems than help, to an organization that is partnering in to find solutions to the issues in this community with homeless. I work hard at that. It's a passion. And as a man of faith, I believe that it is the church's duty, their responsibility, to take care of the broken and the marginalized, the widows and the orphans, not the government. I believe that the church as a whole has failed to do this and has created a vacuum, and now the community social -- people look for the government to fill that gap. I don't think it's your job to do that. I think it's more my job. I think I can do it cheaper, better, and faster, especially after all the experience I've had working with governments and organizations the last couple of years. But that's where I said, I don't blame you. I don't look at it as your job to fix the solution, but we clearly need to partner with you in order for us to do that. So Pathways. Pathways, we started almost a year ago in an effort to fill the void for the winter shelter program. We were looking for a safe, overlying lodging. Green Valley stepped up and offered their facility seven nights a week, which was the first time they've ever done that, and we were glad for their offering. We created a partnership with Green Valley Church, Housing Eldorado, and the Upper Room to run that program with Julia Hackett as our program manager. And we worked under the guidance and support of Nancy Williams, our Public Health Officer. We presented a program to her, which she approved. Because of COVID, it created a lot of obstacles and a lot of walls to overcome. Pathways Winter Lodging provided 90 nights of safe and secure night housing, along with showers, laundry facilities, food, and community building. We provided transportation for all guests from and to the Upper Room. Navigation services were assisted to help them find housing. I think we housed five or six, seven people out of the shelter, as well as got them all listed on the HMSI system, got them into the program. There were 49 men and women between the ages of 18 and 75 that participated in the program. I think it was an extremely successful program. I was proud of how it ended. It had a rough start, finding people to volunteer with COVID and finding guidelines with the fire department, getting their approval to put tents inside a building and so on, but we got it through, and I think at the end it was a very successful program. Housing Eldorado and Upper Room support strong partnerships with each other and other nonprofits and government agencies. We figured that we can solve this problem or address the problem. I don't think we'll ever completely solve the homeless issue, but we can certainly put a dent in by working together in cooperation. The Housing Eldorado is currently funding day navigation at the room where we are providing social services, wound care. We're providing them access to the Transitional Housing Program, or the one in Pollock Pines that they're currently working. We help them with Social Security, disability, garbage license IDs, and so on. We received an endowment from the Women's Fund, and they have provided a grant to provide technology, computers, hotspots, portable printers, to address the people and get them into the HMSI system from the field. And we are currently providing free showers. Every Tuesday night, we transport from the Upper Room to Green Valley Church, where they're provided and offered free showers and access to their clothes closet, where they get clean clothes, get a shower, which is huge for them, especially with this heat. We successfully submitted a comprehensive three-year grant proposal to Eldorado County Health and Human Services to provide interim housing and case management services at a county purchase facility. We're waiting for the outcome of that. We are currently planning for this winter, for winter lodging or a full-time navigation center and emergency shelter. We feel the Western Slope is in need of a full-time emergency shelter. We have no place to put people there, hit the streets, that need a place to go. We, being in the trench and seeing this on a daily basis, we encounter people that are fresh on the streets, that if we can get them off the street, we can kind of skip them out of homelessness and back into a situation, often back home or back into a program. Once they've been in the street for a week or two, they get sucked into that, and the chances are that it's much more difficult to get them out. We see people discharged from Marshall Hospital that end up in our doorsteps that have no place to go, and their health is at risk. We can't refer them anywhere. Having that option is huge. We have hired -- or engaged with a realtor, helped locate a property site for that, and they got their eyes open, and we're looking for options. I should -- I don't know if I should say this or not, but I always say too much. Why did you say that? I know that Upper Room on Upper Broadway is not everybody's favorite place. Property owners, businesses up there, they wish we weren't there, but we are. But that's not to say that we wouldn't consider moving if we found another location. So I can't offer that, but I know that we're here to serve this community, and wherever we can serve it the best is where we want to be. And we can expand any more than we want to or than we are able to right now. We would like to increase or expand our navigation program. We have no conference areas. We don't have any privacy where they can do their interviews and the intakes. Wound care is kind of tough because you want a certain amount of privacy when you're dealing with that. So we're looking for ways to expand, and if I get in trouble for saying that, I didn't say this, but just to let you know that we understand that we're not the favorite building out there, but we're there, and we want to be good neighbors, and we want to be part of the solution, and we're here to do that. We're exploring establishing a community land trust to accelerate the development of affordable housings on the Western Slope, and we're on a major fundraising campaign to support all those efforts. Did I get all that? There we go. We are collaborating with Eldorado County Foundation, Community Foundation, on a comprehensive housing survey on the Western Slope that's going to begin, I believe, in November. We also are working to protect model homeowners from exorbitant rent increases, which many of them are suffering and experiencing within the last year and so. Community education through fall of 2021 at town hall and speaking engagements. We advocate for affordable and workforce and transitional housing developments like the Placerville Armory, which has 82 units going in through Jamboree Housing, Eldorado Haven with 65 units, in Diamond Springs through Mercy Housing, Mallard, 72 units with Middletown Road, 82 units apartments, and Project Home Key on the Western Slope. Thank you.
And I might -- this wasn't part of our presentation, but I want to compliment the city council. You've made great headway on meeting your affordable housing arena targets, I know, and you're to be commended for the work that's gone on, your staff and the council, on moving ahead on those affordable housing projects, because that is ultimately the solution, isn't it? If we can have more affordable housing, we're going to have fewer homeless people and homeless families. So the problem is, we're confronted right now with how we go from where we are now to the point where those actually get built and are ready to take up residence, which we all know is going to take two, three, four, five, who knows, a period of years. And we also know that the county still has a huge backlog that they haven't caught up on. So how do we create pathways for homeless camps? We've -- and again, this is not news. There are nonprofits and local government partnerships that are working in many communities, and we have many examples. We'll share a couple in just a minute. We would propose, one of the pathways would be to convene a focus group of Upper Broadway campers. We think at somewhere in this process, if we're going to transition, if that's your goal, to transition from those camps to somewhere else or that camp, how could we convene a group? And we'll talk a little bit about that. We also think establishing a managed campground with tents and infrastructure is a good first step, and I noticed in your proposal, in the agenda item, there was a proposal for doing that. We also agree with the notion that we should advocate for the Board of Supervisors districts to ID locations in each Board of Supervisor district. As we also, you know, I'm going to add something in here, should be advocating for affordable housing projects in each BOS district throughout the county. I won't -- I'll probably get in trouble for that later on when I hear about it, but I would advocate for that, too. I also think it's wise to consider evaluating options like Conestoga Huts and pallet shelters, which we'll share a little information with you about in the future, in a couple of slides up. The convening of a focus group as a next step is something we'd like to encourage you to consider if you're going to move down this pathway and to get input and involvement of the homeless campers regarding alternatives to the Upper Broadway campsite. Now, it's a matter of determining when the optimum time for that would be, yet to be determined, or if, possibly, if you decide to go down its pathway. We also know that Homebase Consulting -- Homebase has consulting services for input on how to form and conduct the focus group. We also think that we would obviously want to have input from Chief Rinn and the Police Department and Amber Robinson, the hot team city rep, on whether or not, how to conduct this, and if so, when and where, and so on. We also think it should be facilitated by known, trusted local folks like Charlie McDonald and Karen Stinson, who are very familiar with their work at the Upper Room with the campers in the Upper Broadway, and that we would propose and encourage you to consider doing that at the Upper Room. Again, a very comfortable or a place that they're familiar with and that you could convene this kind of discussion. And we think that's a nice initial step to consider. The Safe Spot Camping, and it comes under lots of different terms. If you do research on what's going on around the country to kind of set up these interim, temporary emergency shelter operations, and there's a list there, I won't go over them, of the kind of components, the basic infrastructure of a Safe Spot Camping. It includes things like secure fencing, raised tent platforms, or possible pallet shelters or Conestoga structures, even could include some RV spaces or small RV locations, because in some cases, some of the homeless have those kind of structures, and they don't have any place to park them. They don't have any infrastructure to back it up. A common space with shade, heat, and solar charging stations, a common kitchen area, a place for a gatekeeper, volunteer staff, porta-potties or garbage respectable receptacles, mobile shower, laundry services. And then many of them have defined, particularly because of the winter months, you want to have raised pathways of some sort or some kind of crushed granite pathways. There are a lot of details that I have to get attention to, and garden beds are another option. Conestoga huts are one of the options that's -- there's an organization in Oregon that has a complete construction manual on these, has an enormous elaborate checklist on how to set these up. They are the kind of things that are -- and again, I won't read through this, but there's a little detail on the kinds of components of them. And they've been very successful in adopt what are called Adopt a Hut projects, where local church groups, faith-based groups, and youth groups volunteer to adopt a hut and to help either construct it or materials are donated. We're very -- we've already done some preliminary checking. We are very confident that it would take the time to get it ramped up, but that we could have a number of community groups and faith-based organizations help with that component of a project like this. And then the other one, and I think that was mentioned in the proposal I saw on your agenda item, the pallet huts, these are manufactured up in Washington State. They are prefabbed. They come in -- they actually erect in less than an hour. They are in palleted shelters. They come together in pieces, and they're fairly easy to install. They are more expensive than Conestoga huts, but they are a way to ramp up quickly. And so any kind of managed campground likely would have to have some of these to get started quickly because the Conestoga huts take longer to procure. Kind of in closing, we're encouraged by the opportunities and the support for collaborative work on behalf of our homeless neighbors. We see lots of opportunities. In fact, it's a very rich time to move forward with and addressing a really difficult issue that we've all struggled with for years, and I think it's commendable that this council is willing to consider making some, taking some deliberative actions, whatever those end up being. I can tell you that Housing Eldorado has a strong, dedicated, and passionate group of board members and committee members who have a lot of skills and expertise and background and are very committed to this. We've demonstrated our ability to deliver services, and we're ready to partner with the community and the county and the city for a unified approach to dealing with this. There's a linkage here to some case studies and resources and references that I mentioned in the presentation. And with that, we're ready for questions. Thank you.
First off, thank you very much. It's a wealth of information that is -- you've managed to condense down into the 15 minutes that we talked about, and thank you for that. I appreciate it. And you have -- your group has definitely come a long way since, you know, 10 years ago when they -- or 10 years ago or so when they were contemplating Hanktown Haven, and definitely have found a way to bring together a lot of the community that was kind of operating in silos and brought them in under one umbrella, and I think the synergies are definitely showing through. So both Charlie and Frank, thank you so much for the presentation. And if there's other questions here now for --
Just a quick comment. Thank you, Frank and Charlie. I really wanted the council to have this presentation because this is a new organization that's really kind of stepping in to fill a gap in services that we just haven't had over the last decade or so as we've struggled as a community with issues of homelessness. So as we move forward and consider different solutions, I wanted everyone to be aware that this group exists and, you know, kind of the variety of things that they're doing. Full disclosure, you may have noticed that I am a board member on the group, so full disclosure to council members and the public, should, you know, we ever end up in a spot where the county or not the county, the city is, you know, looking at entering the contract with Housing Eldorado, I would have to recuse myself. So just want to make sure everyone is aware of that. Thanks again for your presentation.
And also, thank you for stepping up and participating in that area. It certainly needs some representation from the city, and you have brought back quite a bit of information as well, so thank you for that. So we're in an interesting spot where we're going to have public comment, and we're also going to have, and actually, our agenda item is on this exact same issue. So you might want to -- I don't know if you want to reserve your comments until we get further along, if you'd like to comment specifically on their presentation. You know, I'm not going to try and split hairs too much here. If you would like to make some comments on their presentation, I would -- we would certainly appreciate hearing them at this point. Do know that we're going to have a whole nother discussion going further in just a little bit, so on this very same issue. So at this point in time, I'd like to go ahead and open it up for any public comment on the presentation. All right. See, and we will, yes. And we will certainly have time for public comment later on on all these issues again.
Is this the one shot for public comment?
No, no.
Okay. I'd like to thank them for their presentation. It looks to me like, finally, a group of volunteers is doing more than what the county or the city has managed to do in 10 years. So in the Upper Room, I think it's an amazing and well-run resource for people who need it. And it's maybe it's not the prettiest place in the world, but it serves a function, and it does for people something that they absolutely need. People do need to be fed. We've had enough people die on our streets already who've been homeless and had no shelter and no food and no place to go. So I'm really thrilled to hear their presentation and see that, wow, we might actually start to make some progress. So it's a complex problem, and it's great that we have some dedicated volunteers and a hot team that's actually working on this. The county has been all too happy to take all the funding we have given them without much, you know, measurable results. I think that the managed camp looks like a I think that the managed camp looks like a good idea. It's like Hangtown Haven 2.0. Hangtown Haven was a qualified success. Several people were able to move to permanent housing and a job from Hangtown Haven. It was a good pilot program, and a managed camp has the implementa, the advantage of being able to be implemented in a timely fashion. We have waited for the county for too many years, it's time for some actions. So, that's, the Forty Niners lived in tents while they built the towns and cities that are now all along the Gold Rush Trail. And there's nothing that says living in a tent can't be done. One of the jokes I heard was, when you decide to go camping, you can spend thousands of dollars to get all the equipment necessary to live like a homeless person. And having backpacked, I've lived in a tent for not more than two or three weeks at a time, but I know it can be done, and it can be done measurable better than living on the street. So, that's, those are my comments.
Thank you, Sue.
Hello, I'm Ruth Michelson. Thank you so much for having this meeting. I, I really do so appreciate it.
Thank you.
I can't speak really specifically to the presentation, because I can't see that far, so, but I could listen, thank you. And I think Upper Room is great. I've taken my youth group there to serve food in the past, and I think it looks just fine, thank you. So, I'm glad to see some progress, a long time coming. I've lived in this county 35 years, I've followed this issue for 35 years. I worked for the county in the 90s, back in the day of Jack Sweeney, and I can remember how it was handled then, and it was an issue that the county didn't want to touch, and said it was the job of the churches to handle it. But church members get burned out, and our church population is aging. It's not easy to have a shelter and stay up all night, all watching over the homeless and making sure things go as they should. So, I don't think it has to be neither or. I'm not sure why, some say it's not the job of government, I think it's certainly the job of government, but that doesn't mean churches can't also be involved, but we just can't burn them out. And I know a lot of money has come into this county for homelessness, I know that the county has figured out how to monetize homelessness, and apply for the grants, and millions and millions and millions of dollars have come into the county, and some good work has been done, I know by our hot team, but at the end of the day, I look at people who have roofs over their heads. Yeah, tents, that's, that's a nice start. It creates some safety for those who are on their own, creates safety for women, safety for others, it also creates safety for our, our communities, so that we don't have unwanted fires by people who are trying to warm themselves and cook, cook their meals. But my hope is that people actually have a roof over their head, they have a comfortable bed, and they have temperature-controlled spaces, just like we all do when we go home to sleep at night, and so I hope that's the end goal that we're working towards, thank you.
Thank you, Ruth.
Hi, I'm Julie Robinson. I don't know if this is the right time, but I'm excited, so I'm going to say it. I grew up in Zimbabwe and in South Africa, so I saw an awful lot of poverty, and a lot of people living in shacks, and that was pretty normal. And so, I suppose my only suggestion is maybe beyond commercial structures, if we could consider the new potential camp dwellers to actually build their own homes. In Kailecha, huge squatter camp in Cape Town, probably 2 million people live there currently, and they built their homes, they, they built them, and there's nothing more pleasurable than building your home, and it really feels that feeling of community. So, I remember as a nurse, walking around, and you know, people greet, it was, it was a community, you know, people greeting each other, and sweeping even their, you know, sand in front of their, their huts, and, yeah, so I just want to put that out there as another consideration. I couldn't really say exactly how those could be built, but I know, like, organizations like Habitat for Humanity has many volunteers who, you know, could mobilize to work together to make some kind of structures, be them cob, or straw bale, or, I don't know, I don't have the answers, but I'm just putting it out there, thank you.
Thank you, Judy. All right, seeing no other people approaching the podium, we're going to go ahead and close public comment for this portion of the agenda, we're going to move on to item number four, adoption of the agenda as presented.
Move to adopt the agenda.
A second.
A second. We had a roll call, please.
Councilmember Barelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Nell?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
All right, so now we're coming into the part of the agenda where we have prepared a presentation, and what is, you know, I'm going to kind of talk just a few seconds here, what, thank you. We've, what precipitated this, there's, there's several things. One is, you know, just the inherent need that everybody in this room knows is here, is, but, you know, the pathway that we have to get, at least from a governmental standpoint, to get from here to where we want to go, involves both the county and the city, as well as the COC, which are three complete independent entities, but we're all interconnected. And one of the things that, that brought this meeting here is that Cleve needed direction from this council to, and this is why it's a special meeting, and this is why it kind of happened quickly on this particular issue, is that the county, the city and the county both have ARPA funds, and, and we have funds within the city that we're going to be making decisions on, as well as the county. We have about 2.6 million, the county has somewhere in the neighborhood of 37 million. Proportionally, it's, it's, it's per capita, and I think that, you know, so it's, it's similar, in similar types of money that we have in comparison to the county. And we, we believe that, that first of all, we pretty much send all of our money to either COC or the county for the issues, all things homeless. We do not have a Human and Health Services programs, we do not have the COC, but we, we have a seat on the Board of the COC, and, and we participate there, and likewise, we often interact with the county. But right now, we're going to be discussing the idea of asking the county to, to, to take a step forward much quicker than anticipated, and the county is, is, and the COC are both working really hard on programs right now that are in development, and I think we all know that, we know what the COC is doing, we know what, but, Continuum of Care. Okay. Opportunity Knox, Continuum of Care, and that's where all the money actually flows through, and if you don't have a COC, you don't have, you don't have access to all the money, and I'm sure I'm preaching to the choir here right now. So, the, the idea that, the idea that we're here today is, was one, to put together, give, put together, give Cleve direction to, to go to the county, and, and potentially for us to start conversations with the county to move forward, both with funding and locations. And, and what really has started this, and Kara has really taken the lead on this as well, is the, the risk of fire in our community, and, and, and hopefully we'll hear from Chief Cordero for just a brief moment, and he'll share with us a little bit about the, you know, where we're at in terms of our fire risk and danger as we go into this fire season. And, and so, I want to, I want to set some expectations that, that we're not going to walk out of this meeting with a solution and all the money, and we know where it's going, but what we are looking to do is work with the county and the COC to, to move forward in a, in a quicker pattern than they, I think they're, they're willing to, not willing to do, but they're ready to do right now. And I think it's important to understand that expectation, we still have to work within, work with them and not against them, they're, they are our partners, I really don't want to throw them under the bus. I know that, that they, they are having challenges, and with staffing, to, to be able to stand up any type of program that we may present to them, and that the COC is constrained by a lot of regulations when it comes to federal and state funding, on how they can spend it, so, you know, it's, and we're, we're the city and not the county, and so, we don't have the funding, but we're trying to find ways to use what resources we have and assets we have to partner with both the county and the city. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Cleve for his staff report, hopefully I didn't steal too much of your thunder.
You did great, you can steal all you want.
Thank you, okay.
Thank you, Mayor and Council and public, thank you for being here today. I wanted to start out with just briefly stating to everyone, not to show that I'm, I'm old and I've done this a long time, but I've been doing this for about 30 years now, and throughout my career, I think I've told some of you this before, I've always, you've always been, I've always been able to find some solution to the problems that are out there. And I will honestly say, since I've come here to Plaserville, and had to deal more directly than ever before with the homeless problem, this is one that has really stumped me, and as you, if you look at issues, this issue along those lines, and nationally, I think you'll agree that it's stumping a lot of people. And there have been problems, as mentioned today, I believe, that Housing First model, there's things to be said for that, but even that has issues. If you look at some of the areas, such as Utah, that promoted that very well, and it worked very well, but then they started running into some other problems also. So, I, I, I come to this today, and these recommendations that we've worked out, and in terms of potentially some areas where we can move into, want to clearly state that I don't have an answer to this, I don't have, I wish I did, and I wish there was a clear answer, that this is the direction you need to go. But I do know that back in 2012, when we started Hangtown Haven, we recognized that we needed to, we needed to try something different, because we were not making progress in, in that, what we were doing at the time. As was mentioned, Hangtown Hagan, Hangtown Haven did have some successes, and there were some issues with it. It was designed as a pilot project, that we clearly said we were going to operate for one year to learn from, and then move forward, and then, so that's why it, it closed after one year. With that, I'll, I'll move into my staff report, as Mayor Thomas mentioned, our goal today is to come up with a recommendation of direction to move forward with the county, hopefully, to get some immediate action in terms of the issues that we are facing. Just in way of background, I've been here for just over 10 years now, and I've seen this, the homeless problem increase regularly, it seems like, from year to year. We have worked with the county to find potential solutions, and participated in, as, as mentioned, the Continuum of Care Committee, the Opportunity Knox, and other directions and efforts that have been done. In 2012, as I mentioned, we did Hangtown Haven to, kind of as a pilot test project, to see how that would work. One of the things that, that really, I think, I see both the good and bad from it, I'll say, is the Martin versus Boise case, that first started in 2011, when a group of homeless people filed lawsuit in this case, to say that they, it was illegal to kick them off public property, and not that, allow them to have a place to sit, to sleep, and et cetera. After going through the courts a couple of times, actually, and finally ended up in the Court of Appeals, actually went to the Court of Appeals twice, in short, they agreed with the homeless people, and said that you have to provide a place basically for them to, to sleep. Now, there's some nuances to that, that you're, some, are some restrictions that can be put on that, and et cetera, that we can do, but essentially, it, it prevented us from, to a certain extent, from closing down camps that were in areas that we didn't think were appropriate, if they were on public property. For that reason, we, we looked into adopting an ordinance, and we did, in January of 2020, the council adopted an ordinance to attempt to address the Martin versus Boise case. We do still feel that that ordinance is legal, however, there are some concerns with it that have been expressed, and those of you who have been on the council, you've heard that, those concerns addressed from the public throughout the, the year since we've had that. During, once, once COVID started up, just shortly after we adopted that ordinance, there was direction given that we should not be moving the homeless out of those camps, in order to avoid the spread of the COVID virus. And therefore, essentially, all that work that we had gone together to try to, to come to a solution, that met with Martin versus Boise, we backed off of during that time, and, and basically said that we weren't going to close any of those camps. So, other actions that we have taken in conjunction with the county, in April of 2018, the city participated in the county in starting up, kind of getting their homeless program started. We contributed in 2018 and 2019, $20,000 each, and we were part of five different agencies that did that in order to fund, at the time, what they identified as navigation services for homelessness. The real goal, I believe, at that time, was to put a, a plan together that would enable them to receive further funding from the state. The, the five agencies, as I understand, participated in that, which meant $100,000 a year for 2018, and $100,000 for 2019. So, we have participated and tried to assist in doing what we can. More recently, the council agreed to contribute our portion of what is known as Community Development Block Grants, coronavirus funds, our share of those funds, which were one-time funds, is, was $421,363. We agreed to contribute that amount to the county and their efforts, they were using, and they were using their funds for that same purpose, in order to purchase a property as part of the Home Key Program. The Home Key Program, basically what they're looking at, would purchase a hotel, and use that then as transitional housing, that they can take homeless off the street into the Home Key Program, and then from their work into getting them into permanent housing. I think it's been mentioned that they are currently looking at a site in Pollock Pines, and that is under, under discussion, and in motions of how to do that, I know they've made applications to the, to the state for the funding, and et cetera. Also want to mention, along those lines, as far as background, there's an attachment to our staff report today, which is a memorandum from Don Simone, Director of Health and Human Services for Eldorado County, outlining some of the current issues and, and things that they're working on in the county. I want to recognize that the county has done some things, they, they've done some things to collect funding, get funding, they did run the Room Key Program for the last approximate year, and so progress has been made in certain areas to do some things, to try and assist and alleviate the homeless, the homeless problem. Why are, why are we coming to this point now? I know the county is, we're, one of the things that you see in the report, they're currently working on their strategic plan, I think, if I recall right from the memo, they're about a year away from achieving that, which then will start the process of, again, trying to alleviate the homeless problem, but through the programs that they will develop in that strategic plan. One of the things, and I appreciate Chief Cordero being here today, one of the things that, that really rose this to, to my concern this year, is the fire danger that we are facing in 2021. We have a joke at our department head staff meeting every year about, about this time, or maybe a little later, actually, usually, we always ask the fire chief what his new word is for the, how bad the fire danger is going to be this year, and it changes from year to year, but I think he's running out of words to come up with to describe it, and I think if I were asked, to ask him today, he would say that there probably may not be words to describe what they fear might, might happen this year that we're in, and I'll invite him, or the mayor can invite him, to speak to that a little bit later. So, there's two issues, though, that, that I really focused on. One is the fire danger due to the drought that we are facing this year, and the second is the fact that the, the lack of sanitation and facilities that are provided in the current camps that we are allowing to remain where they are. The city is providing a garbage service through a dumpster, and that's being assisted by, where's Randy, I signed out, Randy and his group that have new beginnings, that have assisted in, in to make sure that the, that the area is cleaned up. As you know, previously, many times, there was garbage, would pile up on the hillside, even though we had the dumpster down there that was even though we had the dumpster down there that was available to be used. And I want to recognize Randy for his help in new beginnings for assisting and arranging to have people clean up so that it's made a, I've seen a big improvement out there since that has happened. So, we do have the, as far as solid waste that is done, but there are no bathroom facilities out there. We actually looked at a possibility of doing something like that, but because of the site the way it is, we did not feel that it was conducive to being able to provide that. There's no room to put a portable restroom or anything on that side of the road. Therefore, you would end up possibly putting something on the other side of the road. And it just raised a concern with safety, plus the middle of the night trying to use the facilities and et cetera. We just didn't think that was, that we wanted to encourage that or that was a safe thing to do. So, we could not find a way to, to add that to that. So, the, so the, the sanitation and the, I'll just put bluntly, the hazardous waste potentially that is being put on that hillside, and not just there, but other camps throughout the city, is a major concern. And those two issues are the ones that really brought it to my attention and said, we need to really consider doing something. I want to also mention that we do have an ordinance that is in place that states that there can be no open fires during the season that Cal Fire has declared that no outdoor fires are allowed further. And I'm looking at Chief Cordero, I believe that has already been proclaimed this, for this year. So, we're in that currently. However, I understand the homeless may need to cook and et cetera, and so they do. And it's almost impossible for us to monitor that and, and try to, to stop that from happening. So, that, that means that there are outdoor fires that will occur in these camps, and we understand why, and we understand it's happening, which increases the potential for a, a fire getting out of control and, and causing a wildfire. So, these are the reasons that I felt we needed to at least explore doing something, I'll call it on an emergency basis, going forward to try and make sure that we can control the problem. So, over the past couple of months, I would say, I've worked a little bit and talked to Councilmember Taylor. She came up with an attachment to this document that talks about how potentially a managed camp could be work, and that's a term that we, we are using for this. There's some description, it's under option two in my report, that talks about how a managed camp that could potentially work. One of the things that is most concerning with even thinking about starting a camp is location, and that is always the most difficult issue to resolve in, in looking at any kind of camp or even a facility. And we have honestly struggled with. We've, we've suggested some areas that, that could possibly be looked at, but I want to say there's, there's no perfect area. You can find, you can find a concern, you can find a problem with any area that you come up with, there is no perfect area for that. And I want to, I want to emphasize that these are just, three of these properties that are mentioned in, in my report are city-owned properties, and that's one of, one of the reasons they were mentioned, because they are city-owned, and it makes it a little more cost-effective if you don't have to lease or purchase property. So, as, as is outlined in the report, we, we looked at the possibility of, could we create a, a managed camp that would provide tents or as, if, if the desire was there and we wanted to look at something more, as has been talked about by Housing El Dorado, there is potentially the opportunity to look at something more than that. The scenario that, that we looked at is we need to create a facility that we can say anyone can come into. I think there are rules that we can create once they are there, violence, criminal activity, et cetera. I think that there's things that we can do to prevent, prevent those things and, and perhaps not allow people to come back if they break those rules once they're there. But initially, it would be that any person would be able to come in there. The reason I say that is in order to satisfy the requirements of Martin versus Boise, we would have to allow that. And the goal would be to create a camp, and I say a camp, or more than one camp. We've looked at the potential of maybe doing one here, but maybe another one outside the city limits, or maybe one or two all outside the city limits that can meet that need. And once we have provided that, it would enable us to close down the numerous camps that are throughout the city. It enables us to create a safe environment in terms of cooking and et cetera, a sanitary environment in, 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 in terms of providing bathroom facilities, garbage facilities, et cetera. It's talked about showers and clothes washing, et cetera. All of those things are potentially, there are answers to those that could be provided. And we think it's somewhat feasible with, with some direction and some work that could be done to make that happen. If you can put that in one, two, three, four, whatever the number of places are in order to make that happen, then you're able to control the environment, you're able to control the, the risk of fire danger, et cetera, by putting those where they're cooking in, in a safe location that is clearly designed, hopefully, for that, whether it be barbecue grills or some other kind of cooking facilities that are not as dangerous as, as an open fire. So, as I mentioned, there, there are several things have done that we've suggested in this report in terms of how this could be done. One of the things I think that is extremely important that you see in, in many areas where a camp springs up without any controls is the lack of sanitation, the lack of control of keeping the area clean and et cetera. Those are things I think that would be extremely important to make sure that in a managed camp that we're able to create an area that I'd like to say looks like a campground, not like a homeless camp. And I think if you can do that, hopefully, you can reduce the, the criticism and the reluctance for those that see that and are around that to having that in, in their neighborhood or in the area where they're either working or, or living. So, I presented, I've presented three options to the, to the council here today. Options one and three, you can argue, are kind of continuing what we're doing right now, supporting the county, asking the county to initiate new programs, but not really, you know, doing more than that. Option three is, again, just trying to see where the county is. As you know, previously, the county agreed, and in fact, I believe it was in our joint meeting that we held with them four years ago, maybe? Trying to remember exactly when it was. Was it just two? Yeah, the fairgrounds? Yeah. Anyway, it was a while ago.
Yeah, I'm done.
Anyway, one of, one of the things that came out of that was for the county to look for potential sites, facilities. They were to direct their facilities director to, to look at that and come out with potential solutions. To my knowledge, we've never seen those. I don't know if anything came out of those. I understand it did, but they've never been made public. So, my option three says, you know, we'd like to know where those are, what was the result of that, is there anything happening with that? Probably what I'm looking at that we push possibly the most for is option two, which would be to have staff send a letter to the county requesting that one or more managed camps, and I say managed camps slash facilities, it doesn't have to be a managed camp. If there's a better option in terms of facility that could be a warehouse or whatever that could be opened up somehow, great, I think that, that works. But ask them to immediately look at doing something to address the fire risk and the hazardous waste issues in the current illegal camps in Placerville. I think I've covered pretty much all that was in my report. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, so.
Not really a question yet, but I, I am interested in hearing from police and fire, the, just to kind of get their perspective as well at this point.
All right. Any other questions?
Can I, can I mention also that we do also have representatives of the HOP team here that can talk about their progress and what they are, are doing? I forgot to mention that, so appreciate them being here.
All right, at this point, Chief Cordero, do you mind? I guess the question that I had, the reason I asked if you, if you could attend today is that I, we all have some speculation, we've heard on the news, we've heard from our friends, we read it on Facebook somewhere, what the real fire danger is. And everybody has their version of it, and so, I, you know, I look to you as a slightly more, or a very more. Well, that came out bad, didn't it? As a somewhat of an official answer to how bad the fire danger is, because every year they say it's the worst year ever. And we've heard that every year and that I can recall, you know? But, but, you know, there's, there's a real, I mean, there's, there's, there's statistics and there's data, and there's all these things that help develop that. So, I was kind of looking to you for some clarity on what, where we're really at this year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council and members of the community. I guess I'll preface some of this conversation just for my own stating that, you know, my perspective and statements will be based on the fire aspect, and I realize this is kind of a hot topic item with, with the community and whatnot, but my, my statements will be based solely on the fire side. And I do have some information that I did print out and, and provide to you that I can pass out to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, I'll get it.
And yes, as kind of stated earlier, you know, we're running out of adjectives to describe our fire seasons throughout the state, and I've kind of taken the position of, I'll let you know if our season is in November, and that gives me some time to come up with, with the new definition of what this one looks like. But this information I passed out, and I apologize for not having enough copies to, to provide to the public, but I can get an electronic copy to Mr. Morris to, to pass out, maybe. This is, information was provided by Cal Fire. We're fortunate in this unit to have Chief Brian Newman, who is one of the top-recognized fire weather analysts in the state, very qualified. And he gave kind of a brief overview of kind of where we're at. This information is from June 15th. And, you know, locally, we had about 50% of our average rainfall for the year. The rest of the state places saw record lows below that. This has increased our drought status that we're in, and 100% of the state of California is currently within, in a drought category. Locally, we're in what's referred to as an extreme drought category. If you've had the opportunity to travel east up into the, the higher elevations, you'll notice that typically this time of year, there's snowpack up there. I was up at Silver Lake over the weekend, and if you looked really close, you might find a couple pockets of snow. But pretty much that snow level is all, is all but dissipated. The downside to that is that that's increased or decreased our soil moisture. Most of the soil moisture levels within the area are below where they were during the drought of 1977. And the impact that that has is, is the sun hits the ground, the moisture within the ground can create kind of an evaporative effect, which reduces the heating, but also reduces and delays the, the drying of the fuels. As, as the soil hits that record low soil moisture they're in right now, the fuels become drier quicker and therefore more susceptible to burn. And most of us, most of the areas we're a critical state right now. And just to give a little bit of perspective as to where we're at this year compared to last year, I think everybody's aware that last year was a very significant fire season for the state. I forget which adjectives were used, but we, we're all aware. Up, up through June 15th of this year, in the Amador-Eldorado unit, which includes El Dorado County, Amador County, and a portion of Sacramento County, we've had a total of 136 fires for 224 total acres year-to-date. This compares to last year, which we had 128 fires in the same timeframe for 5,115. And you would look at that number and go, well, hey, we're in good shape this year. It's significantly less than last year. But what I'd like to point out is there was an anomaly last year of down, off of Grantline Road in early June where they burned just over 5,000 acres. So, if you take that one out, it's 127 acres for, you know, roughly 100 acres. So, this year, we've had more fires, almost double the acreage. When you look at the comparison to how fire season was last year in the state of California, we burned just over 4.2 million acres with 9,917 total fire incidents, which unfortunately resulted in 33 fatalities and a loss of 10,488 structures. The short-term and outlook, and long-term outlook for Northern California and our region is pretty much what we're seeing right now. They're expecting elevated temperatures. You know, we don't typically get any moisture and rainfall until later in the fall, so kind of what we've got is what we have. And the fuel moistures are already reaching critical levels. In May, they were showing that the fuel moistures locally were about two months ahead of schedule, and I would anticipate that if you pulled those now, we're probably beyond two months ahead just because of the spring that we've had with, you know, the high temperatures, especially the last few weeks and the drying that's out there. So, looking forward, not to be doom and gloom, but the stage is set for another significant fire season within the state of California and especially locally. Again, if you've had any opportunity to travel out, you know, Ice House and those type of areas, you'll notice that it's extremely dry across all elevations. So, you know, locally, we have had several fires. They, they had a fire in Diamond Springs the weekend, and the comments that I heard from one of my chiefs that was there, as well as our firefighters, they were surprised at the way the fire was spotting, two, 300 yards out in front of itself. It only burned a total of about 11 acres. But for where we're at locally, typically, our fire season kicks in late August, September, even October can be significant for us, and here we are in June, seeing fire conditions that we typically do not see locally within this time of year. So, that's kind of the, the outlook of where we're at with the, with the fire season this year. And I'm happy to provide any additional information that you'd like.
I have a, a real quick question. How many, since this is why we're here, talking about the homeless issue, how many of the fires that we've had so far have been started in the homeless camps?
So, I was able to, that's a good question. Thank you. I was able to pull our stats for, from July 1st of last year through today. We do not, within our program, our, our RMS program, separate out, you know, a fire that's isolated to a homeless camp or encampment versus an escaped control burn or that. But I ran the numbers on our unauthorized burning and some of our outdoor cooking fires. And during that timeframe, last year, we had 92 total fires or calls for service. Not all of those are going to be caused by homeless camps. A high, a very high percentage of those are. I think we're all familiar with the, the smoke that you'll see in some of those consistent areas of Upper Broadway and stuff, especially over the winter when, you know, the personnel up there are cooking and trying to stay warm, so. But we have had several fires within, within the homeless encampments.
So, do those numbers, is it, in, did, are those numbers causing concern? Are they above average? You know, since this is what we're addressing, so.
We've, we've, we've definitely seen an uptick in the, the number of calls. Generally, concerned citizens that will see smoke in those areas, and typically, as we know, they're, they're off-roadways, they're, you know, out in areas where you really can't see what's going on, they're not inhabited areas. So, we, we've had a definite increase in those number of calls with the diligence of the community that sees smoke and call and report it, so, absolutely.
Chief, along the same lines, how about calls for service, you know, medical calls for service in the homeless camps? Has it been steady, increasing? Just wondering, you know, how many, is it, you know, one a day? If there's any stats around?
That's, that's a good question again, and you'll see those numbers, they have increased as our homeless population has increased over the last few years. And a lot of the times, the, the calls for service that we do receive are weather-related. You know, in the winter, when it's cold and rainy and things of that nature, you'll see an increase in, in illness and need for emergency care. Same during the summer, when you hit these really elevated temperatures, you'll, you'll see an increase calls for service.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
So, and, and along those lines, and Dennis, maybe this was a question you were already going to ask, and I'm apologizing.
Move over.
Do we have someone from, and Chief Ren, do we have, I know you have, I think, regular visitation of a lot of these camps, and when you go out, or whoever goes out to talk with these folks, do you have these concerns addressed to those folks about the fire danger and, and does it do any good? And I know that sounds like a naive question, but I, I really, I've heard along the lines that. And I know that sounds like a naive question, but I, I really, I've heard along the lines that you do have people that go out. And maybe, maybe, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council, and of course, our wonderful community. I do have members of the HOT team here, and our HOT officer actually stepped out because she's trying to place somebody in housing right now. So it's a good reason to leave this meeting. I didn't bring handouts like my, my colleague here, but I brought people. And if I can get one of you to kind of give, give us a glimpse on what you're experiencing. This Sergeant Soria, who's supervisor of the HOT unit. I'd like to invite him up to, to maybe assist me in answering that question and, and give a glimpse of, of what you guys are experiencing as you are dealing with the homeless population.
Yes, sir. I wasn't expecting to be at the podium today, but thank you for having me. In terms of the campfires at homeless encampments, yes, they're there. And yes, we do enforcement or warnings depending on the status of the fire. So generally, we have flyers that we'll print out and give to homeless people and either warn them or cite them if they have active fires because it is such a danger.
So along those lines as well, our, our just response procedure has been, since I've been up here, is with, with any type of, of law enforcement contact, our, our first measure is through education. We try to educate as to the dangers, the health and safety risks. If that doesn't seem to get through to the folks, then we have to still be the police. Those are not the, the measures we like to immediately rely on, but let's be frank, that's what we are.
You certainly serve dual purposes there as by Officer Robinson's departure of our meeting here today. I want to thank the Sheriff's Department and especially the HOT team and you guys that, that spend so much time and energy going out and supporting this group. And, and the fact that, that you have partnered with the city and you travel, you know, we both travel into the county, you travel into the city. This joint effort has really helped have a combined effort. And where it's not, there's this ping pong effect and we're sending them your way, you're sending it our way. It's a, it's kind of a group effort. And it's, you know, and most of you who know the HOT team know that they're not out there as, just as an enforcement program, but, but also to support and, and, and help move, move people that really want to move into, out of homelessness. And I think, what is, what do you, this is a question, and it's a question for all of us. So when we, when we look at doing this idea of a camp, and I, and I'd like, maybe we can get some answers here because this is more, well, who do you see or how many do you see willing or that would be interested in moving to? And I'll ask you guys too, because I know everybody has a perspective on this. But, but what is your perspective when it comes to the idea of having a, a place where people would go that's a more structured program?
That's a good question that we haven't surveyed the population with that directive of a question. You know, our main focus is to assist them with any type of outreach, to get them housed in kind of any way we can, whether it be rehabilitation, mental health, or family reunification, that kind of thing. So that's a question we could start asking them, but I don't have an answer for how many people would be interested.
Okay, thank, thank you for your, for sharing your perspective as, as we go through this. Thank you very much. Mayor, there's, there's data out there that it depends on the type of program that's being offered. And that's why I appreciate Mr. Porter and Charlie when they talked about the collaborative approach to, you know, trying to figure out how, how, how do we make this successful if that's what we choose to do? But there is data out there that, that shows maybe twenty percent, if you're lucky. Some folks just do not want to be in, in a structured environment. So it's just going to depend at the onset of how we frame this and how we work with, with that population that we want to deliver those services to. We don't want to scare them out of it. But there's going to be some heavy lifting at, at the front end that, that I'm glad we're bringing nonprofits in because the government, just by the mere fact we are the government, doesn't elicit a whole lot of warm and fuzzy feelings with, with a lot of folks, so.
Just a moment, I think somebody has a question.
Well, I had a follow-up question, which I think Chief Ren is kind of addressing. But, you know, we have all these camps, and I was wondering what percentage are accepting services and what percentage are refusing services at this time?
I'd have to get back to you for a number on that. We do track that, but I don't have any numbers immediately with me.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. We can prepare that and forward it to the city manager who can disseminate it to the council.
All right, thank you. So one of the reasons I asked this is, is our, one of the internal conversations we've been having is if we, if the city or the county or we're looking to have conversations with them to, whether it's property, location, assets, resources, what size of a camp could? And it, and we just don't know who, we don't, we don't have, we don't have a plan all laid out. I mean, we have ideas, but we don't know who all the cooperators will be and, and where it'll be. But one of the, I think one of the burning questions we had is how many people is reasonable? We don't want to overbill, we don't want to underbill, but we want to make sure that we can support those that are willing to. So Charlie, if you had an answer to that question or some insight?
Yeah, I, my, my number's twenty percent. The people on the Hill will probably actively engage in moving. The other eighty percent, you're going to have to use a little more force. And probably ten or fifteen percent, you're going to have to use a lot of force. They're very happy where they're at and they're left alone and they don't want to participate, participate in program. So if, if you think that one solution is going to solve it, it's not, which it was that easy. You're dealing with people with mental health issues, you're dealing with all kinds of issues that, that have to be figured out and navigated through. So twenty percent, how many engage in services? That depends on what kind of services you're offering. How many people would engage in a, a legal camp, a managed camp? Again, depends what is that camp going to look like? What kind of freedom are they going to have? What kind of restrictions? What kind of oversight? Who's running it? I, I, it's, we'd have to have more information. And that's one reason why I think a great, a roundtable discussion with the group on the Hill at the Upper Room would be really educational, informative, and give us an idea of what it's going to take to get them to move or get the majority of them to move, what they need, what they're looking for. And then to give law enforcement an idea of what kind of pushback they're going to get.
All right, thank you. I do have a follow-up question, if you don't mind. Charlie? If, if we were to, and I know it's a low, and I know, I think the term's low barrier, or, you know, you have to let anybody in, but there can be rules set once they're in there. So if you had a rule of no drugs or alcohol after you get in, how many are going to stay?
Not many, twenty percent.
So do we have to like let them do meth and heroin in their tents?
You know, that's, that's kind of one of my issues with Room Key is the, the low barrier, no barrier. You can be an active user and, and get housing. And you can put an active user in a room next to somebody with moderate to severe mental health issues, next to a room from a woman that's trying to escape domestic violence and expect that program to work and be successful? It's not, it's not a safe environment for her. It's just going to cause problems. But then if you require steps and for them to work on a program to improve themselves, that gets into funding and what you can and can't ask them to do. So I, I wrestle with that very issue. I think you need to present a plan for them to better themselves, to help them out. I think you have to start low, but you have to, they have to make progress to be successful. And that's.
To meet them where they're at.
Meet them where they're at and try to raise them, lift them up with encouragement, with hope, with support. Most of these people are, just need that support. They're, a lot of them are a lot smarter than you think. They're pretty educated, they make bad choices, they come from trauma, and they don't know how to function in society, and they're using the drugs and the alcohol to escape that. But they're some good people. And if you give them the opportunity and the support, you can have some pretty good outcomes.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I've heard it said by some people in the county that, that have done, worked on homeless programs that are not Eldorado County, that, that we are somewhere in the range of fifteen to twenty years behind many other cities and, or, and, and counties. And, and this is truly our starting point. We are, we're, we're not starting, and we can't make up that fifteen or twenty years in one year or two years or probably even five years. But the best, I've said this several times before here, the best time to plant a tree is twenty years ago. The second best time to plant a tree is today. And so we, you know, so hopefully we can start planting trees and, and see how we're, see how we can do this. So at this time, any further questions? Okay, with that said, we're going to go ahead.
Do you want me to show pictures or?
Please have some pictures, do we want to see them?
Sure, let's go ahead and show some pictures here so that if you, if you feel necess, if you feel like you'd like to comment on those, we want to give you all the information to at least give us your thoughts of where we're at and, and from reading our reports and such, where we're going here.
Yeah, the photos on the, right there. And they should be able to. There we go. So you can just move the, these, these are the Broadway camp, the camp up on Broadway. And so just kind of look through those. The amazing thing about some of these camps on Broadway, what you're seeing here, that, these are kind of hard to see, but this is a structure that was built up there. And it's quite, quite the structure, let's put it that way. To my understanding, the, some of those even have, you know, by use of a generator, electricity in them and, and things like that. This is a stove that's built in that one, wood stove. You can see the stovepipe going up the top. And these are just some general run of the surrounding area. As you can see, there's some take care of their camps better than others, which is a case for all of us, I think. But dreams of how we take care of things, so. I, I don't know, I, maybe, is there significance to that, the yellow patch on the tree?
They just said dump here, dump trash here or something like that.
Okay, got it, it's assigned.
Yeah, I took the photo.
Right. Okay. Okay, got it. Thank you. And that, that's what I have for those, so. Any questions or anything else?
All right, and then the map?
Do you want me to show the, the sites also that we? Okay. Yeah, if you can bring that up, Joe. So these are the proposed, this, this is a little bit hard to see, but on the, that's fine, Joe, just, that, that one's fine, that map. On the right-hand side, the first site, Joe, I don't know if you can point to that or not. That's right, yeah, to the right a little bit farther, right there, that site. That is actually one site that I've looked at. It is on Upper Broadway. If you know where the, what's the name of the hotel? Gold Trail Inn, just to the east of it. Well, actually, there's a, there's a health center, I think it's a chiropractic business right next to that. And then right next to that is a vacant lot. I want to mention that's a site that we've designated a hotel site, we have had from time to time. In fact, just recently, there was a, an inquiry about that site, so. We do not own it. That is privately owned, so right in this location, privately owned. It would require some sort of lease or purchase of that property if we wanted to consider anything like that. The next one that is city-owned that I'll mention is our old dump site. This is out, just off of Highway one ninety-three. So Spring Street going out or Ex Coloma, Highway forty-nine, and then one ninety-three cuts off. Just after it cuts off, there is a site there. It's about four acres that the city owns. And potentially, I don't know, we have not gone into the analysis detail of whether or not there would be issues with us allowing camping on that site. It's cleaned up pretty well, and if you visit that site, you could, it's, it's blocked up by a gateway. You could walk in and look at what is there. Next site I'll mention right here is on Lower Main Street. I call it the site below Kentucky Fried Chicken for lack of a better description. It's down below Highway fifty, below Main Street, down kind of in a hole. In my report, I talk about all these sites. This one's Highway one ninety-three, the old dump site is a little bit remote in terms of being a little ways out if people were trying to walk into services. It's a little bit farther out. This one, a couple of concerns we had with this one. Number one, it's right next to the creek. We're not supposed to do anything within a hundred feet of the creek. If you come back a hundred feet from the creek, you're getting pretty close to the hillside of where, what, where Main Street comes down. Reduces the size of this one quite a bit. Plus, it is close to our historic downtown area that raises concerns with that working there.
Is that where we've had illegal dumping that you've cleaned up?
Yes, yeah, there's been some down there, yeah, yeah.
We also store a lot of our corp yards.
Right, the corp yard does store, store materials down here also. If you were to look down there, you'll see piles of roadway material and stuff that they, that they put down the road base, so. I'll jump up here to this one. This is one that I mentioned, this is privately owned. It's on Brew Road or Brew Ridge Court, it's called at the end of it. It's an, an open site next to the county's Department of Health and Human Services that they have, where many of the services that you would offer to the homeless would be offered from though, that building that is up there off of Brew Road.
That's a vacant building?
No, this, this is a vacant site. There's a building next to it. It's just off the parking lot at the end of that, for the, yeah, yeah. What's that?
We don't own that.
We, we do not own it. That is privately owned, correct, yes. The county did not. It is also next to the car dealerships, a little bit farther up, the lumberyard, et cetera, that are there on Forney Road. Forest Services on Brew Road, yes. So there are quite a few services that are, are in that area, commercial businesses. The last one I'll mention is this site right here, which is off of Ray Lawyer Drive. This is a site that the city does own. It's kind of an odd-shaped parcel, long and narrow. It is right across the street from county offices and the library on Ray Lawyer Drive. And it's, there are some, some little bit issues in terms of if you, the bottom half of this, between Ray Lawyer Drive and about Fair Lane, is fairly steep, dropping off and would probably be a lot of work or very difficult to be able to do. If you go past, about from the library down on this other, what I would call the east end of it, however, it, it's more reasonable, it's not as steep. It actually goes, in the lower part towards Ray Lawyer Drive, it drops off. In this other end, it goes actually up. But if you get down to the very end of the property, there's a road that goes in or close to the end of the property. And that, from that road going back onto the property slopes up fairly gradual. And, and that's where if you wanted to do something, it would probably be the most feasible to consider doing. There's, there's quite a few trees, so it would take some work in terms of tree removal and et cetera and grading, et cetera, to probably, to make that work. But, but, but could work in that location. So those are just five sites that we kind of identified, just because of location. I say three of those because the city owns those. There's the primary reason that we identified those.
At the same time, the county has yet to disclose their sites that they have.
Correct.
They have. And, you know, and we, we have met with the county more than once and expressed our interest in hearing about that. And they're, they're preparing a report that's gonna go before their, the board of supervisors. And at that time, they're, they will, they may have more information to go forward. They're still, still doing their work there. So, like I said, I don't want to throw them under the bus. I know that they're working hard on this issue as well. We've had conversations, and to hear the, the challenges that they have with internally is, is equally is, well, it's challenging in their, in their world as well. If we could have the lights back up up here. At this time, if there's no further questions for Cleve on that?
Dennis, I have a real quick question.
Sure.
Are we talking about the same sort of arrangement that we had for Hangtown Haven that we're only going to allow residents from the city? Or is this because of the law, do we have to open it to everybody?
Good question. We've had those discussions ourselves, and, and I have to admit, I don't really have an answer for you on that. My, one of the concerns that came from Hangtown Haven, and depending on who you talk to, and I know there's a couple of people I, I haven't seen for a while, I saw Art Edwards out there, High Art, who was very involved with that, that we worked closely with during Hangtown Haven. But the reason I mention that is, and, and there's some disagreement on this, but I think we have some data that says there are, were some concerns with the fact that we opened a camp that attracted people from outside of our area. I know, I believe in talking to some of our police officers have mentioned that they have talked to people who have came here just from the Sacramento area. And they say, well, why? They have more services down there than what we offer here. And the answer they got was, they feel safer up here. And so that is a, that is one of the major concerns, is, is if you were to open a facility, how, can you do it in a way that meets the requirements of Martin versus Boise, so that you can close down the illegal camps and, and place people, allow them to go into the legal camps, and still avoid attracting people from outside of the area to come in? So that's, that's a question that we have, one we would like to answer, but I don't have a, a good answer for that at this point.
So one more. And that's part of the, the issue, is that we, in order to close down the camps, we have to provide. So what I'm hearing, and the size of the, of what you presented, we're not gonna be able to get too many people in there. And I'm thinking, okay, so if we start closing down the camps, what if we have more, more people than we can accommodate? So then what happens?
Well, that, that's exactly what we've looked at and how we handle that. I will, I will tell you two, two things. I looked at this, and I, I believe potentially, and, and somebody may correct me if I'm wrong, but one acre, the maximum, and it would be tight at this, you could possibly get fifty tents on one acre. But it would be very tight if you were to do that. Because my goal would be, you don't just need to provide that, you've got to provide some of those central facilities.
Correct.
Restrooms, garbage service, hopefully some navigation services. I've looked at the potential, you know, could you actually install a office trailer on the site that provided navigation services? So the other thing, in talking to the county, to Don Simone, it seemed clear to him that fifty would be the maximum that they felt that they could manage on a site, would be manageable. So those are just some numbers for you to think of. The site that I mentioned, of, of those sites, some of them are bigger, but what you could feasibly use, for example, on the Ray Lawyer site, is only about an acre. The, the old dump site on Highway 193 is about four acres, so it's, it's bigger. Up on Upper Broadway, that's about an acre, just a little over an acre, if I recall right. The Lower Main site would be the smallest. And then the Brew Road site is also around an acre, maybe a little over an acre. Actually, on here, I put two acres, but there may be some restrictions on how close you go to the edges of that, so there's some other issues.
Having sat on the sidelines a bit and watched through Wendy's eyes during Hangtown Haven days, I do know that that attractive nuisance, if you will, that was created, where we had a, a significant influx of homeless, as well as a ninety percent increase in, in call volume during that time, was, was, was one of the major factors that, that led to the decision to, to shut it down. We, we heard people that, who had, it was reported, and I don't, didn't speak to them specifically, but that came all the way from Texas to, because they heard about it. And whether that's true or not, it's, it's, you know, makes for a good story, but the reality is, is that, you know, what we don't want to do, what I don't want to do is become the, the depositor of, of all, all things homeless in this city. While we want to do our part, and this is, this is one of the messages that I want to send to the county also, is while we want to do our part to support and to work to help with this, we don't want to be the place. And I say that with air quotes, we don't want to be the place where everybody goes. I also heard from a pastor the other day who has worked with some people and also knows an officer in Folsom, and he says, if you notice, there's no, there's not many, if any, homeless people walking around in Folsom. And he said, that's because they send them up here. And I don't know whether that's true or not, and I'm gonna qualify that with, I heard it from somebody, they heard it from somebody. But he heard it from an officer, and he's a pastor, so he can't lie. And, and so, you know, I, I imagine there's, there's some truth to that, 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 because if you do go around Folsom, there are no homeless there. And, and so are we becoming the, yeah, are we becoming the place where they are bringing them all? With that, I'm, I'm gonna stop talking. And I want to hear, and I, we, you know, I know our council wants to hear from, from you all, and kind of give us some thought, your thoughts on what we're doing here, what your thoughts are, and where we should go. With that, I'll open it up for public comment. Please approach the podium when somebody's done next. We seem to have forgot to do, how to do that. Last, our last meeting, people weren't sure what to do to, for public comment, but please, when one's done, another one steps up.
I don't know the exact numbers, but there is the point in time study, and isn't one of the questions on the point of time study, how long you've been here? I know when I looked at it before, like, a few years ago, the majority have been here five years, ten years, it was a long time. There was a very small number that was six months or less, but I don't know, maybe Frank has the real numbers.
That's correct.
Yeah. So I think that's amiss, the, everybody comes.
My name's Jane McGinnis, and I just wanted to say, first of all, hallelujah, praise God for this agenda and for this meeting. Thank you. I've gone over all the agenda attachments carefully. I've looked at everything you've put together, which is great. And I just wanted to ask you to take into consideration five points as you go forward. First of all, the two-person tent or the hut, obviously, you have to make the best use of the space that you've got. But two-person tents or huts are going to mean roommate situations. And I think recognition needs to be given to the high percentage of homeless with various mental and emotional issues that could make a roommate arrangement dangerous for one or both people. I just want to put that out there so that we're consulting with appropriate experts going forward. But let's assume a seventy or a fifty tent camp, even under the best roommate conditions, this is only going to house maybe a hundred people, maybe a hundred and forty, leaving several hundred on the western slope, still without shelter. And the people who are gonna be without shelter, I think, are those most likely to refuse shelter, the most mentally, the most emotionally compromised people, leaving our most vulnerable people still on the street. And inevitably, they're going to be subject to law enforcement, because, you know, as the chief said, the police are the police, and they have to do their job. But they're subject to action that many of them are in no position to understand or to deal competently with. So this is something that we need to think about. More than one camp is, is going to be needed. This is a small point, but it's a huge one for the homeless people. You need to take into account the dogs. Occasionally, you'll find a homeless person with a cat, but usually the cat runs away or is forgotten. But there are a lot of dogs out there, and for the homeless people who have these dogs, this, in, for some of them, is their only family. And it's their emotional support person, if you will. For some of them, they've had them for years. We can't ask people to come into shelter and give up their animal in order to do it. So this is something that we need to consider. Now, I saw no mention of gender separation. Do current discussion plans include housing women in the same camps as men? Homeless women need their own secured space, so right here, more than one camp is needed. The incidence of rape and sexual assault among homeless women is extremely high, and many women have attached themselves to one particular man, even if he is an abusive man, just to avoid being occasionally gang raped. This is just a reality of the streets, and we need to look at this. You, you cannot open a camp and say, y'all come. And men, women, wherever you're gonna sleep, you're gonna sleep. They need some protection. I urge you to propose to the county at least a two-camp plan, with a secured camp reserved for women and single mothers with children. This could also allow future collateral services, maybe after-school learning programs, because you're gonna find homeless children are often in need of these services, a little more tutoring, a little more help. Whether intended or not, I, I see a potential problem here, that I'm not saying, don't do it, I'm saying, be sure that you remain aware of these things. A woman's camp could prove really, really important to both the city and the county. Once we have shelter beds to offer, the intention is to begin enforcing the camping ordinance. And there's no reason not to do that if the shelter has been provided. But whether intended or not, if we fail to provide sufficient beds for women and children, it's very likely to result in disparate impact in the enforcement of the camping ordinance. Now disparate impact issues are even more of a slippery slope than just a straightforward civil rights violation. The accusation of gender bias poses a real problem in what is becoming a very gender-conscious society, whether we understand it or not. And this would put us right back where we started, with the city of Placerville's name on a file folder, sitting in the pending cases file with the ACLU. It puts the police in an untenable position if the majority of their enforcement ends up being women on the street, who would rather be on the street than go into an unsafe camp. So as discussions with the county go forward, I just hope some of these issues will be incorporated into the process. And, and I wanted to say, just remember, as we move forward, Jesus Christ speaks to us in Matthew 25:40, "As you did it unto the least of these, you have done it unto me." I hope that you, the city, will reach out to a lot of the people that you see all the time, and instead of having a whole bunch of people all trying to do the same thing, that we move away from this siloing situation and maybe solve some of your manpower problems in getting this done by reaching out and pulling in willing volunteers to work with the city as a task force.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to ask you.
Good evening.
Hello, Art.
My name's Art Edwards. I know many of you. I wish I had an hour to answer all the problems brought up here tonight, because we solved almost all of them at Hangtown Haven. And let me remind you of one thing, during the period when you were talking about, oh, bad things happening in the community, at the same time we were building Hangtown Haven, remember that the prisons in this state were opening up and sending their people back to the county's cities they came from? Do you remember that? So I, I want you to think of, before you blame homeless for everything, there are a lot of other things to be considered. And I, I just wish I had more time to talk to you, because we, for example, the women problem in our group was not a problem. We would put the women between, in terms of their sleeping area, between men who were dedicated to protecting those women. And nobody, nobody in our camp ever bothered a woman. In fact, we had a reputation for being very, very protective of our ladies there. So I wish we could, I could talk with you more privately or in person for a while, and explain to you how we were so successful in, in what we did. So we learned the hard way, but I think we finally did it right. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Art.
Don Vanderkar, forty-one-year resident of the community, and one very active with Hangtown Haven and the Nomadic Shelter. And I, Art and I have worked together for many years, and I'm glad that Art did speak up. Just a couple of observations. There are many success stories that came out of Hangtown Haven. I think you should consider talking with some of those people. We had a system at Hangtown Haven that was self-governing. I think how that might be put involved, involved in subsequent homeless sites, I think, needs to be considered. The fact that there has been little activity here in terms of dealing with homeless is perhaps affected by the fact that Hangtown Haven was shut down. When Hangtown Haven was operated, it was, in fact, something that did attract other people, because it was so successful. We have people in apartments and other places in this community who were former Hangtown Haven residents. I think learning about their stories and how it happened, how things worked at Hangtown Haven would be, was actually handled. My wife made me promise not to be defensive this evening, but I had to be a little bit. Mainly, I want to say thank you, Placerville staff and council, where now, I think, starting to move, and it is so great. Thank you for this process, and I encourage you to continue. Oh, I failed to mention one other thing. I am, I was formerly on the board of Hangtown Haven, I was very much involved in leadership of the Nomadic Shelter, and now I am part of, of the, the new group, Housing El Dorado.
Thank you. And I actually went to one of the weddings for the, from the couple that came out of, I can't, I can't remember their name, what is?
Kenny and Benny.
There we go. And a wonderful couple, both a real success story, going out, getting jobs, getting, I think they recently, a couple of years ago, bought a home.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it was, it was something, something good there. Any, any other, any others? Okay. I knew you wouldn't disappoint, John.
And the Bible is much more important than anything I will ever say. But anyway, I want to commend you for a three O O with a O on the left side, and that would be nice when that actually works for some of us vociferous, loquacious ones. I want to point you toward Community First Village. There is a nine-minute video, please write that down, please look at this. This is the largest tiny home RV homeless facility in America. I have a call on my phone I didn't answer because of this meeting today, to go visit them at their facility. Community First Village in Austin, Texas. They would be able to answer a lot of the questions. They would be able to answer a lot of the questions as far as what percentage of what type of homeless will respond to a managed camp facility. It's wonderful to hear us openly talking about Martin Boise. Martin Boise is not intended to penalize anyone, as you know, but praise God for your response, your humanity, and your noblesse oblige to help those, that 60 or 75% of the homeless that are wrestling with mental illness. As far as the 20% that would respond to a managed camp facility, when the feeding, when the one free meal a day is connected to the managed camp facility, food will double or triple that participation, depending on that it's not run with overly stringent qualifications and also self-management to a certain degree. I understand, I've been working on the streets and with the homeless for 50 years. I was homeless 52 years ago, even though my father was a presidential economic advisor with three presidents. So I understand a bit of what they're going through out there. Speaking to Mayor Steinberg for two years every week at city council in Sacramento, they've finally moved ahead to some specific items, including safe ground and safe parking. But I want to commend you toward moving toward this. The county will help you with $2.5 million of ARPA funds that Cleve wonderfully mentioned, and $35-plus million of American Rescue Plan funding for the county. This could be a great step towards something that the entire state of California could and should be proud of. It's very brave of you to say that we're 15 or 20 years behind the curve of some locations. I know the clock isn't moving, but time is. As far, thank you. As far as, as far as hygiene, there is a capability to bulldoze a little part of that public property where the, where the, the, throwaway, whatever the fancy word is, the dumpster. And I have dumpster-dived 52 years ago, so I know what that's like to climb behind Fiesta Market to get the fruit and the throwaway food. There is room to bulldoze there and to have human decent restroom facilities. If you'll talk to the pit room, pit stop organization in San Francisco, the pit stop organization, they can help you how to train attendants for watching that. I agree at not crossing the road. I want to close with the fact that Ron Ameral, who was tragically murdered by a 60 mile-per-hour illegal speeder on that curve, which is the Placerville Speedway, Upper Broadway. A year ago, in January or February, he was illegally cited with a citation for illegal camping. I'm not gonna mention the officer, but I have a copy of the citation. "A year later, across from his homeless camp, nothing had been done yet to alleviate the homeless crisis that you are bravely facing as heroes, as Charlie McDonald and Art Edwards and Don and his wife, after midnight at the Nomadic Shelter." I couldn't believe these elder, elder teenagers out there at 10 and 11 o'clock at night with the homeless at the Nomadic Shelter. But the churches need your help. It's not just the church's responsibility, it's not just the government, it's all our responsibility.
Thank you, Jonathan.
And so move ahead and be brave, and the county will step with you. And let's make something that the entire county and state can be proud of. And God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more for public comment? All right.
We let it go on a little longer, because I think that this group in particular has a, has a very vested interest in, in serving this population. And I wanted to make sure that you had, you all had a chance to kind of get your words out. And so I appreciate you taking the time to formulate your comments and, and share those with us. I think they're important as we move forward through this. And so with that, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council for a little further discussion and direction to our city manager.
I'll start, please. This is a start, though. I mean, there's a lot to talk about there. And, you know, Hangtown Haven had its successes, but it also had detrimental effects to this town, and we can't ignore that either. You know, an entire business section, Upper Broadway, was wiped out, and it still hasn't recovered. If you lived on Smith Flat Road or up in that area, you wouldn't have considered it such a success when everything got taken out of your front yard that wasn't nailed down. You know, we need to, we need to move forward thoughtfully and not ignore the problems, because there's two sides of the story, and we need to find the balance for all of that. Placerville is 5% of the population of this county. I don't think we need to be 100% of the solution. And I think when we look at Hangtown Haven, part of the problem was, we were the only ones moving ahead. And that's why a lot of the problems came forward our ways. When I think about a solution moving forward, I'm thinking about what Cleve said at our last council meeting, when, you know, everybody says, "Not in my backyard." And I think, you know, to move forward in a fair and equitable solution that every district in this county needs to designate a spot. It needs to not just be Placerville. You know, I envisioned kind of a graduated step in, you know, different rules and moving forward in each camps. And I appreciated the comments, you know, with the women, children, and shelters and dogs. All of that needs to be considered, and part of that is a plan. But I need to see a total plan before I'm ready to start designated areas and moving forward. I'm not gonna do to these residents what happened at Hangtown Haven without a plan, without addressing the things that have not been addressed, the problems. That's what I'm gonna say for now.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, gosh, there's just, there's so much. Agree with Jackie. I mean, I think, you know, I'd love to be able to do this meeting again with the board of supervisors, where we could have a collaborative meeting and really talk through these issues, so that it isn't just Placerville. I don't mind Placerville leading. I think that's a statement to the city, that we're willing to take the lead. But the reality is, we are, you know, one, a very small portion of this entire county, even if we do punch above our weight on a lot of things, and being the, you know, the city or the county seat. So, you know, I don't have a problem with moving ahead on two. But to council member, council member knows words, I'd like to be able to do that in tandem with the county, to show that we're gonna be moving ahead jointly, that we're gonna have more than one camp. I think people here tonight alluded to that as well, is the one camp isn't gonna be enough. We need additional locations to adequately house the unhoused that are in our, in our community, in our county. And so I do think we need a plan from the county to how they're going to do that, at least a timeframe for when they're gonna start doing something on their end. And we know, I mean, I think everyone said it here tonight. I mean, I think the 80% are, probably won't come forward on one of these things. So we're, you know, we're looking at a subset, a small subset of the unhoused that we have. And that's just the reality of the situation. You know, we're not going to, I don't wanna boil the ocean in the hopes that we're going to solve all the problems. But just, I want the public to realize that these are gonna be small incremental steps, and hopefully in a way that would allow us to enforce our no camping ordinance again, and try to have a little bit more control over, you know, people living on public land. But it's gonna be a slow and, I think, very painful process. You can look at any city in California, whether they've been 15 to 20 years ahead of us or two years. There's not a lot of success stories out there. We've spent billions and billions of dollars in California, and the situation's only gotten worse. So we clearly aren't doing something correctly across the state. We're have, there's successes, there's no doubt. And that doesn't mean we don't do something, but let's not kid ourselves either. It's not working, the present models that are out there right now. I know there was a gubernatorial candidate today, John Cox, that said there probably needs to be some involuntary hold on people. And I actually agree with that. There are some people with enough mental health issues that probably can't make a judgment for themselves. We have Britney Spears been under 13 years of conservatorship. People on the streets that I see every day on K Street in Sacramento that are defecating in the streets, or peeing, or laying in front of my door if I get in early, that have absolutely no idea what they're doing. I don't know how they're gonna make an informed decision for themselves to be able to say, "I wanna go into a camp, I wanna stay on the streets." They're far from that. And I think we've all buried our heads in the sand just to think that there are people out there that can make decisions for themselves. We have to have part of the solution. And I'm not talking about just Placerville or the county. This is a statewide problem. There has to be that portion of it as well. Those DMH facilities that closed back in the day, and it wasn't just Reagan, it was a whole different process of going from a statewide-run facility that were horrible conditions to a more county and community-based system. And that didn't work either. So, I mean, there's a lot of problems that have gone back decades that we aren't gonna solve. And I just think, you know, we, we have one, I think we have a goal here of trying to get the city to be able to enforce its no camping ordinance and ensure that our city doesn't burn down and be like a paradise, because we had a campfire that got out of control. But also, I'm sort of rambling a little bit, but, I mean, I'm not a big, I'm not thrilled about having to set up a camp where, you know, I have a family here, I have a single mother over here, and I have someone, you know, that's actively doing heroin and drunk over here in the same tent. I mean, that, to me, is not a recipe for something that's gonna go really well. And so I really wanna think through how we're gonna do this, so that if we're gonna do this, it's done in a way that's thoughtful, that keeps people, that allows people to be in this place that's safe or safer, and it allows us to be able to not have a lot of these camps that are pomped up everywhere. You know, I don't know what that's gonna look like. I don't think it's gonna happen in the next, you know, two months. But I would like to see us start moving forward with a really concrete plan on something, though. So at the very least, we can start getting a more managed control of it, knowing that, you know, this, we aren't going to, we're gonna have very few success stories. But we can try. And that's just the reality of the situation, until the state really muscles in and does the thing that it has to do, which is probably tens of thousands of people that need mental help, that are gonna get in an outpatient service two hours a day or two hours a week, and think that that's gonna solve the issue. Thank you.
All right. So I've got something else here. I think I'm just, I've got a bunch of, you know, just to kind of lay out, my thinking on this issue is, I'm just gonna go in a bullet point way, but homelessness has gotten worse over the last decade, and especially in this last year, in part because of Boise v. Martin, that kind of ties our hands, in part because the state is releasing prisoners early from jail without someplace for them to go. And the COVID-19 guidelines have further tied our hands to take a lot of action on this. We cannot currently enforce our camping ordinance effectively. If we do start having people pack up during the day, it's going to scatter them to the woods or cause them to loiter on Main Street and the business districts and the parks. And I don't think that that is a better situation. I am very concerned about the fire risk. I'm very concerned about the hazardous waste. And I am really, it tears me up that we have condemned a part of our business district to blight. I'm just not okay with throwing our hands up in the air and saying that there's nothing we can do about this camp and having those businesses suffer that are in that area, and the homes and residents that are in the area of these camps. The city has 200 units of affordable housing coming in the near future, and this is great news. The county is also working on some projects. And I'm really happy to hear that they are, it seems like there is momentum behind the county. Full support of all of the work that they are putting in. However, none of these things are going to make a dent in the illegal camps in Placerville in the near future. It's just, there's, there's a gap in, in service and need that is not met with these projects. After putting in a ton of thought on this, I believe that a managed camp situation is strategically the best option. I am not naive to think that there's not gonna be problems with it. This is definitely a harm reduction strategy. I was in favor of our camping ordinance. Probably, to the dismay of many people in this room, I'm still in favor of our camping ordinance. I wanna give our police department the tools that it needs to effectively enforce it. I, I also wanna reduce the risk of catastrophic fire to the community and pollution and hazardous waste and blight. I think that given the once-in-a-lifetime available funding that is, is open to be used in kind of a discretionary way, it would be just unconscionable not to try to alleviate the, the issues that we're facing and reduce the risks to the community. So I am, you know, in terms of option one, two, and three, supporting the county in their current endeavors, I would say yes. Requesting that they construct a managed camp or similar facility, I would say yes. Following up with, you know, where their locations are, I would say yes. The options one and three are kind of status quo, we should be doing that anyways. I, I really support option two. In terms of locations, personally, I like the Ray Lawyer Drive location for a lot of the reasons that Councilmember No mentioned. It's away from homes, it's away from business, it's close to public transit, it's close to a Rite Aid grocery store, it's close to Health and Human Services, it's close to the public library, which was supportive of the Pathways Project and providing a space for homeless people to use computers and internet. I think that that's the most feasible spot and would have the least amount of impact on businesses and residents. That being said, what we're really talking about is asking the county to do a project and to fund a project. So if they have another suggestion, or if they would rather do an emergency shelter in warehouses in a location of their choosing, I'm in support of that, too. I think that we could leave that at this, at this stage. I think that we could leave that to the discretion of the county and what they're willing to do. But I'm definitely in support of sending a letter to the county to request that they immediately construct a managed camp or shelter. And with that, I would take a stab at a motion, and you guys can...
I wanna, I wanna make a comment, too.
Let's chat more.
Okay. So I'm going to, one of the things I wanted to mention, and Michael brought it up, is that it was really disconcerting to hear, I believe it was Charlie, told us that only 20% we could really count on as being cooperative and wanting to go forth with a type of program. So we're still stuck with 80% that we are going to be, I think, servicing and going through just what we're going through right now. And I think that, that that 20% number is what is striking such fear in our citizens. And, you know, to think that we're going to all these, you know, lengths and, again, dumping more money for just having 20%, you know, it just, it almost seems like, why? You know, why are we, people are trying so hard and everything. And if those are the results, it's like, and I, again, and I'm gonna agree with Michael, and I know that, I attended a League of Cities virtual meeting, and there was a city councilman from, I think it was Citrus Heights, and he said the very same thing, that there's just too many folks out there that are in need of the, not, I don't wanna call them hospital, but the facilities that we used to have that turned out, and that was unfortunate, that they were, turned out to be so awful, because I think had they been corrected and, you know, that addressed, that maybe we wouldn't be in this situation, but that's all hindsight, I realize all that. But, you know, with... But, um, you know, with what we're trying to do, it's like we're, i- it's, it's all about mental health, and it's about trying to help folks that have mental problems and drug problems and stuff. And, you know, we're just not equipped with that kind of, um, it's like we're almost, um, we're providing, uh, areas and facilities for them to continue this type of, of behavior. And I think that's where most of the folks are fearful, you know, and where it comes from. I'm not against it, I realize that there, the folks need help, but I'm not sure that what we're doing i- is... I, I just don't know if that's the help, and, and that's the way we go about doing it. Um, and I just, um, I, I don't know the answer. I wish, as you can tell, I, I'm just, I'm so confused and I don't know. I, I hate seeing these folks out there, you know, I, I see, I see it down, and I, I disagree with the, with Kara that Ray Lawyer Drive is, I, I got a business down on Ray Lawyer Drive. And if only twenty percent of the folks are gonna be helped, it's gonna, to me, right away, I'm thinking, okay, it's gonna draw the same situation that we had up on Broadway and, you know, because the folks come down there to be them by their friends and, uh, partake of the facilities and, you know, the eating situation, and I'm thinking, okay, are we gonna turn that into what's happened up on Broadway? And, and I, I just, like I say, it's, it's, I think we're all just fearful and we don't know what to do. You know, for fear of having it, uh, happen again. I, I don't know, I, I honestly, and that's where I'm coming from. And I, I do believe that we really, we need more help from the county. I think that's pretty apparent, we've all said it. We're, we're just, you know, we're six miles here of, how many, a hundred and twenty-four thousand? That, yeah, that we're, you know, we're trying to solve a problem that's just countywide, and it just can't all fall on our shoulders, and you folks, too. You, you guys, I commend you, you're just doing a stellar job, all of you, and I, I, I just can't applaud you enough. So, that's where I'm coming from.
Kara, before you move forward with a motion, I'd just like to discuss more so I could tell you why I'm not gonna support your motion, but maybe move to a place where we can agree on a motion. Okay? Um, 'cause part of the problem, what I see is you're asking the county to do fifty percent and you're asking the city to do fifty percent, and I don't think that's a fair split for us to take fifty percent of the program. I, I mean, I really would like to push every district supervisors to take their part. That, you know, El Dorado Hills is sitting down there with forty percent of the population in this county, and they're more than happy to shove all the problems up the hill, and it's not fair. They need to do their part as well. Um, so, you know, I'm pushing for each district to have their camp. And I don't think that every single district has to have a no bars camp. I, I think the city is a terrible place for a no bars camp, and I'll tell you why. Because we, they, they can walk out of their shelter and walk and get alcohol and walk and get drugs. And as you read, I've been, I mean, I spent the whole weekend reading all the studies, all the Housing First, you know, the problems, the success stories and whatnot, and, um, one of those in, in, you know, they were comparing Salt Lake City to San Francisco and why Salt Lake City was having a higher rate of success than San Francisco. And part of that was Salt Lake City did it on the outside of the city, whereas San Francisco did it right in the middle. And the people who were habitually, you know, drinking and doing drugs with those people, even though they got into a housing, they walked out their door and all their buddies were there, and it, it was too hard to say no. So, I don't, you know, I think that we need to do our part, but I don't think a no bars shelter is our part because it's not the right place for it. You don't have rehab centers in the middle of cities because it's too easy to get access to everything that they want. Also, you need to look at the city right now, it's, I mean, there's big parties up on Broadway. Woo-hoo, who got a bag of something and they all do it together? I mean, if you talk to our hot team and your chief of police, you'll, you'll learn more about that, the habits and how that works. We need to break that up, that, you know, we don't wanna create one place that's gonna just be a huge problem for one area, you know, we need to separate it. I mean, there's, I'll just say a certain vehicle that comes into town, I walk town a lot, and then you see certain people going to that van, it's easy for them, you know, they're all in Placerville. I'll just go take and pedal all my goods in Placerville. You start separating that, you're gonna start noticing that vehicle make it multiple camps. You're gonna make it easier, easier to start pinpointing the problems, the problem people.
What is that, what is that vehicle doing? I mean, I mean, we're here to have an honest conversation.
They're dealing drugs.
They're selling items.
They're selling things you can't get in stores.
Okay.
But, you know, a- as far as moving forward, the county needs to do more than one. I think they need to do one in each district, everybody needs to step up. Nobody gets to say, not in my backyard, it has to be in everybody's backyard, otherwise we're not all working together.
So, um, I actually, I don't disagree with anything that you said, um, and I, I respect your, your point of view on this. And, and really, I, you know, I recognize those problems and, and I don't disagree. Where I'm coming from, though, is if we don't do something, we have exactly what we have. And if we break up that camp, we have the campers scattering to the woods where it makes it really difficult for our law enforcement and our firefighters to go in and effectively manage fires and provide services to people that need them. Um, and, and I don't, I, I think that this is better than that. I don't think that this is, I'm not thrilled to be in this situation. This is not an ideal situation. I think this is a harm reduction, um, standpoint. We have people openly doing drugs in tents right next to women and children right now. Um, we have this happening right next to businesses and homes and the trail. Um, and that's what's gonna continue to happen if we don't do anything. So, all the things that could happen are the things that are already happening. Um, and we would lose a chance to mitigate it and reduce risk for the community. Um, but I do, I do agree with the concerns, um, and, and I agree that the county really needs to step up. Um, part, I, I'll go ahead and I'll, I'll make...
There's, there's more to this.
Or you can continue talking after I make a motion.
Well, let me, let me just say a few things. If you, if you don't mind, I mean, you can make a motion if it gets, I don't know. Don't worry, I'll let, I'm not gonna take your motion. The, um, one of the things, and I have a question for, honestly, I'm gonna get in trouble from somebody, I know, 'cause we've all said that tonight, haven't we? From somebody, but I'm gonna ask this question. If we, let's say, we hit our numbers, we find those twenty percent. We find a camp that we can have them safely housed and we meet some of the, some, if not all, the criterias that we have, there's still eighty percent that is out there. Are, have we actually solved our problem or did we just reduce it by, by a fraction? And I, I'm kinda looking at April back there, um, I'm, I'm looking at Charlie, I'm looking at the chief. I kinda wanna know that, I wanna, I wanna know if, if we are actually solving a problem here or we're just shifting it ever so slightly, but not a whole lot.
Yes. What'll end up happening is, is, uh, it'll be a, a situation of displacement. So, we will displace them from area and, and basically chase them around. It'll be like trying to pick up mercury off a table.
Don't they go deeper into the woods and places where they're trying not to be found, then?
Not, not typically because they're used to still obtaining resources. So, uh, they will become even more transitory in nature, um, where they'll set up a camp for a day or two until we identify the location and abate it through ordinance. Um, a- and then they'll pack up and leave. So, we'll chase them around is what'll end up happening. Um, some may decide that they don't like the law enforcement pressure and, and completely leave the area. But, that's...
I'm just, I'm, I'm, you know, 'cause I'm kinda stymied by this number of twenty. And there, there's no way that we have the resources or funding right now to, to handle, unless, if we got, let's say, we were able to find that hundred percent somewhere, we're still looking at twenty percent. And, and that leaves eighty percent out there that we're still, and I think that the twenty percent that are gonna come in are, might be the more compliant or the more, the ones that are, that are seeking help and solutions, and they're not the ones that are resistant and, 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 you know, I don't like to use negative terms, but maybe a little more argumentative and combatant with the process for which the police might wanna come in and, and suggest that they, they adhere to.
Normally, what we've seen is, is they have to hit, and as odd as this may sound, they haven't truly hit bottom. So, when they hit that bottom situation where there are no other resources available for them, that's when we see the compliance or, or them seeking out assistance from hotter other resources to pull themselves out of homelessness. So, people that, you know, there's a, there's a, a misperception. A majority of the people that are in a homeless situation receive some sort of funding. So, there is a, there is a monetary thing that occurs. Um, so they're able to sustain a comfortable existence by building structures on public lands, by having money to, to supplement food in, you know, food intake or to buy vice items, so...
All right.
Sure.
Um, question for you, Chief Friend. Um, do you think that having a camp or a shelter, whatever the county would be willing to provide, um, would that make it easier for the police department to enforce the ordinance and decrease the presence of homeless in camp lands impossible?
It would, absolutely.
It would?
It would, yes, yes. It would, it would allow for us to, uh, enforce our no camping ordinance, which basically is reclaiming the public lands that have been taken over now.
Jane, I wanted to thank you for your comments. Um, I thought they were, you kind of brought some things to the surface that I've heard at different places and times, and I think they're, they're important to note. I don't know that we could, that we're gonna be able to hit every one of them as we move forward initially, but I think they're certainly important, um, to, to keep the top of mind as we move forward. So, yeah, so I just wanna express my appreciation. Everybody else's comments, you know, they're thoughtful, you guys have been at this a long time, Art. I know that we, that we go way back, uh, we've, you know, you, you, especially with Wendy and me getting involved, very, you know, on the peripheral, you know, chatting with you guys, and I, I commend your effort over the years and, and your work at Hangtown Haven and the people that you did support and help. I think that was just amazing, and, um, and some good things did, absolutely good things came out of that. Um, with that, I'd like to make a motion.
You better not.
But, okay, in, in your motion, I would like you...
Can I make a motion?
Uh, I would like to, you to, to think about, um, I'd like to, for the, for the mayor and vice mayor to, to have, to, to have a two-by-two also, to, to request a two-by-two in this process, to, to have a, an internal discussion about these, a lot of the things we discussed today, so, as part of that.
Have you talked about having a joint meeting, um, I think Jackie mentioned it, or Mike, with the board of supervisors?
I think, I think, uh, the two-by-two is the place to start, to kinda...
Haven't you been doing this?
No, we haven't.
Not on this topic.
And, yeah. I think, I think it's important to, to start the conversation internally, frame it out, to not go cold turkey into a room and...
Well, it's just that we've been, you know, I've kinda lost track of what, and we've talked about it for so long.
We really haven't had any significant discussions with the county until the last week, when we actually said work. What happened was I called the county and I said, hey, we're gonna have a meeting and we're gonna do this. And he said, okay, um, and one of my, one of my contacts over there. And, uh, and so we talked a lot about what, what the, where the county's at and what they're doing and how this fits into their program and, 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 uh, we, we had some real frank conversations, and I kinda shared some of the frustrations with the city, he shared some of the challenges with the county, and we, and we're here, and we're, and we're doing our part in the city, they're doing their part in the county, and we're gonna have to have some conversations, figure out how, how to move this ball forward in a meaningful way sooner than later because this, just at the very surface, the fire danger is significant for the city.
Well, I don't know what I'm remembering, but it just seems to me like we've tried to get cooperation from the county in the past. It, it just...
A lot, a lot, you know, there's a lot of things, you know, and I said the same thing 'cause I said, you know, like, like, what are you guys doing, right?
Well, when, when Wendy was gone, the continuum of care, I mean, that was ongoing then.
Right, so, the, all of that is an evolution. And, and a COC does not just start and then all of a sudden all the money flows in. There's, it's, it's a growth process and they, and they have gradually built up the, uh, the ability to get grants, and now, and now they have a good grant-writing program, they're getting monies, they're, and without a good COC, you don't, they just don't give you money. Without some track record, you don't get some of the, some more money.
Great, and I remember all that, but I do remember that we got something like one million, or they did, one million point four or something. It was a drop in the bucket, it is, you know, and I know, I know we have to begin somewhere, but that's what I'm remembering, and this has been ongoing for...
And it's crazy, the amount of money that, that homeless, the vacuum that homeless creates in, in funding and money. And that's why, you know, um, volunteers and these groups, uh, like Housing, Housing El Dorado, did I say that right? It are so important in these processes because really the government is not the solution to this. So, one of the things that got, one of the things that created a lot of challenges was while the COC was working on their strategic plan, it, it hit a roadblock when COVID came. And they had to stop everything, divert a lot of funding for the, uh, Project Roomkey up in, um, Pollock. And they, probably, I'm, I'm gonna guess they probably have put over two million into that. And, yeah, and, and, you know, and, and there's been some successes that have come out of there. If, I, I wouldn't wanna attribute a dollar to a success person, but it's, there's been some successes that have come out of there, and people have moved out of, out of homelessness by virtue of that program, which, which is a great thing. But, so, so, so they are, so the COC is restarting their strategic plan process, and they are going to be, uh, bringing that to a culmination this fall, and that's, and that's part of their program. So, things are moving, this strategic plan is part of the process that they are going through. They're taking the long approach. We're right here, this, today, we're taking the short-term approach. And so, so they're a long game.
I had a, a question, I guess, or not even a question, but just food for thought, and that's, I mean, the county's gonna love this. I mean, why, why wouldn't they, right? I mean, they're gonna, we're gonna give them the land and then not be able to implement a program and with no really guarantee that they have to do anything else, and then they can basically say, well, we did this program.
The funding.
They're funding the part of it, right? Um, but there's no, that doesn't mean that they're gonna do anything else. So, basically, we're only doing this one pro, I mean, there's no, without actually having some policy format in place, they can just claim victory on this one issue and be done with it. Um, because there hasn't been a lot of political will to do anything. Um, so, if we're gonna go forward with something, I would still, again, recommend that we have some assurances that this model, um, you know, this camp has to be in conjunction with at least one more, if not more than that, it should be more, but otherwise, we're sort of just teeing it up in our city with no other safeguards, um, from the county aside from running the program. And the COC is just a, really a vessel. I mean, the COC is a vessel to take, to bring in federal dollars. You have to have a COC to bring in those federal dollars, and then the county is the one that implements the programs or hires a nonprofit to run the program for them. So, there's no structure to the COC outside of it actually being the, the vessel to distribute dollars. Um, it's really gonna be either the county or a nonprofit that's gonna actually run the, um, any, any type of programs that are happening. So, I, I just think we need to be, you know, I'm like, again, we can lead, but I don't wanna be the only person and look back and be like, oh, great, we're leading, but the army's all back there and I'm there up by myself charging.
We're, we're running a different race.
Yeah, so, that's, that's my concern. Um, you know, this is supposed to be, um, well, this should be, and not even joint, but we should be part of a county-led program, not leading the county-led program from the city of Placerville.
I still go back to, you know, this has been ongoing for four or five years, and we just keep talking. Everybody keeps talking and we're doing nothing. And I know COVID, I know all those things, but during that time, it didn't stop people from talking. I mean, we could have been planning...
Actually, it did. Well, it, it did, it stopped, but, you know, one of the challenges we run into is, well, it shouldn't have stopped them from talking. They should have continued their, their, their research and their programs.
That's a good point.
But it did, and for whatever reason, they felt that they could not hold a virtue... But it did, for whatever reason, they felt that they could not hold a virtual, when everything else went virtual, they couldn't hold a virtual town hall meeting and discuss their issues. It was disappointing.
Right, right. I'd like to make a motion.
So I agree with Michael. I agree with Michael. I think we have to put some teeth in it and stop talking.
All right, okay. Does anybody would like to make a motion?
I would like to make a.
Kara, Kara wants to make a motion.
And it may get modified and that's okay, but let's get something on, on the table. I would like to direct staff to request that the county immediately construct a managed campsite or emergency shelter that will provide sufficient capacity to accommodate the homeless campers, campers in the city of Placerville and provide ongoing funding for a five-year period. In exchange, Placerville is willing to contribute a piece of city-owned property if one turns out to be viable after doing some feasibility studies. I would like to also direct staff to strongly encourage Eldorado County to construct similar or, or equivalent projects in each district of the county or at a minimum more than one of these sites. And I would like to request that we set up a two by two meeting with the county.
I, I didn't hear your last one.
That we set up a two by two meeting with the county to further discuss this, the details.
So your, your, your wording of instruct the county is kind of like the tail wagging the dog?
Where, did I say instruct?
Yeah, you did. I, I don't know how well that's going to go over.
Well, no, let's.
Am I getting in trouble tonight?
How about suggest?
Where did I, did I say? Where, that's not in my written, written version, where did I say instruct?
What you were thinking.
I think you said instruct staff to.
To direct staff.
Yeah, direct.
To request.
To request.
To direct a request?
Yeah.
It sounded more like you instructing the county.
Oh, no, no, I would never.
Okay, did I, did I mishear that? It was like, oh crap, okay.
Direct staff to, to request that the county construct.
Okay.
A managed campground or shelter.
Okay, can you read that again?
That will provide sufficient capacity to accommodate the homeless campers in the city of Placerville and provide ongoing funding for a five-year period. The city is willing to contribute property to this endeavor, um, of city-owned property if one parcel ends up being viable after doing some feasibility studies on it. Um, and to direct staff to strongly encourage the county to construct similar or equivalent projects in each district of the county or at a minimum at least one other facility. And then to request a two by two.
Are we setting any kind of timeline? So we don't just keep talking?
Immediately, immediately was in motion. Yeah, I mean.
Yesterday.
Speaking, speaking with Cleve, I mean, our, our goal is really to have this, you know, for the fall.
But that's what I'm saying, should we make a specific request for time?
And the county's timeline is, you know, if they're going to use ARPA funding, that decision's going to be made in August. So that's.
So part, part of what we're doing here is to, um, to, to attempt to work with the county to tap into their ARPA funds as well as COC funds, as well as potentially the city ARPA funds. And, and so this is a, what I would call a good start or opener for our conversation. I don't, I don't know that this is going to be the final.
To address the funding?
Well, to address the, I mean, there's a lot of unanswered things in here and, and, but this is what we need to do to move it forward, I think. Any comments on the motion?
Well, I just kind of feel like I'm showing the county I have a pair of aces and then asking them to, you know, fold when they have, they're holding a king and a jack. But.
Yeah, I, I don't feel like we're asking for enough. I don't feel like we're asking to move forward in tandem. Here again, we'll put all the problems in Placerville and we'll hope that the county will do something and they have no track record for that. And I honestly, I object to the mayor and the vice mayor as the two by two because of Kara's interest on the housing Eldorado. We're saying that they're probably going to be one of those people who will manage those camps in the long run. I just feel there's a little bit of a conflict of interest there. I'm not saying not to have a two by two, I'm just objecting because of your position.
That makes sense.
We can talk to John Driscoll about that.
It, it, it's not a legal issue, I, I just think someone else should serve.
Oh, I, one, one thing, you know, when we, when we met with Don Simone, he, so each, each department in the county is putting together a, a list of asks for ARPA funding. And he does have a number of asks that include buying properties and buying houses throughout the county to immediately house homeless. So there are other projects in the works that they are considering that would likely be spread out through, through the county as well. And, and the process would be that it will go before the Board of Directors, the Board of Supervisors, and they'll, you know, pick and choose which projects they're going to fund similar to.
I feel like really the population that we're talking about is the problem population. And, um, I think it needs to be evenly distributed. I see the direction that you're moving is still going to leave us with all the problems. And the county can say, yay, we did all these barrier places and look at us and we're stuck with all the problems. And, um, I'm not in favor of that. We, we need to be, you need to start not negotiating from here, but start here and negotiate down. And I, I don't think you're setting the city up for a good, good place in all of this.
So Kara, that's interesting that you're telling us that information that we didn't have before. So I'm wondering if, if, it sounds like he's already got some things, I mean, they are planning.
Yes.
And so maybe that's what we need to do is have some sort of, whether it be two by two or just them coming and presenting to us or having.
I, I, I agree Patty, and that's why I, I mentioned doing a joint meeting of both us, probably South Lake Tahoe and, um, and the Board of Supervisors. Because we need to have everybody with, basically at the table.
I agree.
And saying, here's what we're doing. I, I love Don, he's great, but I want to hear from our colleagues that are also elected officials throughout the county and in SLT to say, all right, I think everyone knows and everyone's going to hear this. They know where we're at and we're willing to step up to the plate and do something. But I don't want to go out there again on my own without knowing that they're going to be doing something as well and that it's going to be spread out throughout the county. So that it's not just Placerville being the one actually doing all the services and the only place that actually has a campground. And yes, that does, and, and here's the thing, the reality is, we're not going to get this done this fire season. This is not going to happen this fire season. Just trying to figure out where we're going to be, how the contracts are going to be done, it's government. This is not going to happen this, this fire season. Uh, I wish it could and if you could, you know, get through CEQA and do a bunch of other things and not have to worry about it. I mean, it's possible, but it's not likely. So we're really talking about probably next year anyways. But my suggestion would be that we do have a meeting with the county, South Lake Tahoe and ourselves, put all the cards on the table, see who steps up to the plate. We're here today because we wanted to take the lead and do this, but we shouldn't be the only ones at the table. And right now, we're the only ones at the table.
Michael, isn't South Lake Tahoe having, they, they've had some pretty good success because they got a windfall of money and bought like three hotels that they've.
They did, but they are on the hook as well though, because they committed to like, I think, an extra 10 years and beyond it. Without guarantee of, of state, of state funding.
No guarantee of funding.
Um, so they're, they, they took the leap, which God bless them, but they, they took a, a big leap.
Yes, they, okay, I, thank you for clarifying that.
Honestly, I don't know, while Tahoe's done a good job on their, on their end of the, uh, over there, I would rather have this be just a Western slope.
I, I agree, I think we're two different entities really.
At least if we're going to put in a request, that's, that's where I would go with it.
Timing wise, you know, we, if, if we want to have our ask included in the Health and Human Services project list to submit for ARPA consideration, timing wise is now. If we say we're not going to do this, we're going to arrange meetings, um, then we're, we're going to miss the, the timing for potentially getting ARPA funding from the county.
So in, in your thought.
Well, that should be, that should be on this, on the county then to really step up. I mean, why, why are we the ones doing it?
Can I, can I comment on that? You're right, in order to ask Don Simone to include it as part of his Health and Human Services request for ARPA funds, we committed to have something to him by July 1st, if we were going to do something. However, that doesn't mean that we have to go through him. We can go directly to the CAO and through the Board of Supervisors to make that request directly that they do something. Their.
So are these ARPA funds that are, that are not in the program dollars that are already coming to them? These are additional ARPA dollars?
No, no, it's part of the 37 million that they're getting.
So there, that money has to be programmed already by July 1st?
No, what, what happened is the CAO's office told each of their departments, they wanted their request by Ju, by July 31st, by the end of July. Don Simone told each of his divisions, in order to do that, you submit your request to me by July 1st. So that's what he kind of hinted that we should try to do. And then he'll fold it into his request to them. So the, the CAO's office is getting all these requests, I think it's July 31st, the end of July anyway, I think it was July 31st. And then he will, you know, sort those out and take those forward to the Board of Supervisors for consideration.
And, and, you know, there's going to be 200 million dollars worth of requests there. So we're, you know, we're trying to.
Well, it's either a priority for the county or it's not, regardless of July 1st. I mean, that's an arbitrary date because these, these dollars are coming to the county and the city regardless.
Right.
So there's no statutory reason why something has to be done by July the 1st besides our own internal.
Right.
Uh, process.
I'm just saying though, once, once they program them, it'll be more difficult for us to get our foot in the door.
But why?
We, we can.
There's five supervisors that can make a decision to do something.
I mean, once those five supervisors make the decision, if we, we should try to get in before July 31st anyway to at least make the known what our request is, is all I'm saying.
We can ask them to put ARPA funds to build a campground in every district. I mean, that's what we can request. Request what you want. Don't, don't try to anticipate what they're going to stay and, and go for the minimum. I mean, I, I think what I'm proposing is fair and equitable, you know, and let them tell us why it's not fair.
Right, I mean, otherwise this whole discussion is sort of pointless because basically we only have five days or two days to get this back to them.
Okay, I amend my, my motion. I think, I think I might be able to figure out a way to move this forward, maybe. I would amend the motion to direct staff to request that the county immediately construct managed campsites or emergency shelters in each district that will provide sufficient capacity to accommodate the homeless campers on the Western slope and provide five-year period of funding to support that and that the city is willing to contribute a piece of property within the city limits for one of those locations.
Yes. Well, except we do have a, we have a supervisor who, so it would, you know, so we're, you know, adhering to.
I would, I would second that motion.
And, and then the other points of that as well.
So one of the challenges with that.
Now you speak up.
Yeah, well, you didn't have that motion before. One of the challenges with that, it, it is just, you know, this is a reality of the world that we're, that we're in, is that the county does not have the resources to stand up five sites. They just don't. They had, it took them a year to hire a, um, a coordinator, a coordinator, intake coordinator, navigator, navigator, intake navigator for, for the homeless. And, and to, to, to consider standing, I mean, they won't even let us know what their properties are because, you know, the, the challenges that are going to come from that. So, you know, we can, we can request this. I, it'll fall on, I mean, it, it's a, honestly, I think it's a waste of time. It, it, it's pushing an issue that, that I don't know that is going, that will not resonate with those people that want to move it forward. Not to mention, I don't think, I, I, my honest opinion, Don Simone's going to look at this and go, that's really a great idea, but we can't do that. And so it's, I don't know that it's a realistic.
Okay, so the county's getting one-time money. That, that could be used for designating and acquiring the properties in each thing. I mean, the county's never going to be able to run this long-term. They need to come up with a long-term plan, which is going to be working with housing Eldorado, the churches and multiple other sources. So I think that we have to request that they designate a place in each district, either with property they already own or property they're going to buy. I mean, we, it's a one-time deal. We're not going to solve the entire homeless issue forever with this one-time money. But what we can do is set up the properties and the structure to be able to move forward with it.
Well, look, I mean, realistically, they probably, more than likely, they are never going to do five sites. However, they need skin in the game. And skin in the game just doesn't mean the city of Placerville. And so I think that's where I'm coming from on this.
So maybe just by saying five sites, they'll say, well, maybe we, we can't do five, but how about three?
But are we, are we going to, you know, so this is the beginning of a conversation. I, I think, I don't think that this is the end of the conversation, that we're saying, it's this or nothing. What do you?
I agree, I'm saying, this, this is a starting point for those negotiations, discussions with, with the county. I, I would hope, of course, it would obviously, it would obviously come back to the council, but I would hope that we're not saying either you do five or we're walking away.
Right.
No, I, I don't, I don't think so either. But the reality is though, is that what we're saying previously was, we're going to do this here and we just hope you do something somewhere else.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I think it needs to be a strong message that there needs to be.
Correct.
Multiple sites to consider. You know, the fact that they, you know, they, the, the problem with them unable to stand up more than one site with 50 people at this time is really a function of funding. And, uh, and it impacts our, our city significantly because they hold the funding, COC holds the funding. They're taking their time, I wouldn't say they're taking their time, but they, they've, they've struggled with getting their strategic plan done, which would help drive some of these conversations further. But we're, but we're here, we're, we're, we're still here in this place and, you know, there's part of us that want, you know, part of us, we, we seriously talked about, say, we want it by September 1st. And, you know, that's less, I mean, if you think about it, it's two months away. And.
We can't do that.
It, it's not going to happen because you're going to, even if you come to an agreement, then you're going to have to work out all the details, right? The devil's always in the details. So there's a lot to hammer and hash out before we're going to come to an agreement with the county. I mean, I agree with Michael, it's not realistic, it's not going to happen this year, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't start it and get it done. I mean, what, what we've said too is 80% of the people probably aren't going to participate. We're still going to have that problem even if we build that camp.
But we'd be able to enforce our ordinance.
Yeah, and that's, you know, that's one of our biggest challenges is our inability to give.
It'd be part of the conversation moving forward.
Yeah.
So maybe suggest changing the request of five to.
Let that, let it.
Just go ahead.
It's a starting point.
Just go ahead and make that, you know, like I.
It's a request.
It's a request.
If you had another motion. Do you have something else?
Well, I.
I mean, this has been a long conversation.
I, I, I agree, and this, you know.
This is the longest motion I've ever.
I've been waiting.
Well, you know, one of the, one of the challenges is, is, one of the real challenges is, is that, uh, that, you know, I have a hard time negotiating from a point where we're throwing so much out into the room that it's not really reasonable, that we're going to walk back a long ways. I would say we, we need to have at least three sites and the city's willing to consider a place, one of them in the city. That, that's, you know.
I'm okay with that.
But.
It's too little. You ask for what you want and then you negotiate down. You're, you're already negotiating down for them.
No, I'm not negotiating down. What I'm, what I'm providing is a realistic starting point that I, that I think we can have a realistic conversation. They're just going to, there's a lot of giggle factor in five sites.
Yeah.
I.
It's a high giggle factor.
Show, tell me what else, tell me why that's fair.
Why what's fair?
That's, I mean, you're proposing.
Why it's fair because the, the funding mechanisms that are in place, the staffing that's available, it's, it's just not doable. They'll say, that's, that's, that's a great request, we like it, but we can't do it. So I think, I think it's important to have a reasonable request that, that they can look at and it doesn't immediately, they just don't immediately walk out the door and say, that's, that's, we're not doing that.
But maybe by forcing them to tell us why they can't do it is a reasonable, you know, I, I don't. know, I, I don't, I, I don't know.
They just don't have the resources to, to stand up five camps in any reasonable amount of time. If we have a long-range plan over the next five years to stand up five camps-
Okay. What if the request is to designate the five camps, but that we're gonna have certain amounts set up by the end of this year or next year or whatever?
Kinda like a housing overlay where, you know, you already designate, I mean-
Well, they, they commit, commit to-
Make some sort of-
This long-term plan, but a minimum of this. Yeah, that I would support.
Before we, I mean, and that's really, realistically, where it's gonna, the conversation's gonna end up is, is that commitment.
I, I always feel like I don't know where a conversation's gonna end up when I sit in a room with maybe 10 people. So, I don't have as much confidence that I know exactly what you know.
Are you talking about politicians?
Okay.
How much are the, how much are the districts? Because there's a lot of, you know, the seat, is it CRC? The, how much are they involved? The, the, in the county? Like, you know, because they're unincorporated. They, we're the only city.
Community services district.
The community services district. How much are they?
The CSEs?
Yeah.
How much input do they have? Do you think, do you know?
I don't know.
Because they're pretty, I mean, naturally, it's, they're like their city council.
Yeah.
So, I'm just wondering, you know.
So, I, I agree. I mean, I, my personal view is that we are asking the county to fund something that's gonna alleviate a problem within Placerville. And there is obviously a lot of politi, politics on the Board of Supervisors, why this has not gone forward in, in so many years. And what they do with the rest of the districts does not, it doesn't change what our objective need is in the city. So, I'm willing to compromise on this to get a motion through. And Dennis, I like your suggestion. And it sounded like Michael would sign on to that. So, I would-
Yeah.
Be willing to rescind my motion if you want to put that one forward.
Go ahead, Dad.
Which is what?
Yeah, repeat that, because I don't-
It was, it was too, too-
Exactly. What is your motion? So, I know what I'm voting on.
To direct staff to request that the county immediately construct a managed campsite or emergency shelter equivalent.
Just one?
At least three, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
At least three throughout the county.
Right.
And Placerville would step up for one of them.
And Placerville would be willing to contribute one piece of city-owned property to that effort.
What about ARPA funds?
Fund, fund accounts for five years.
Yeah, and fund five years. Do you want ARPA funds in it? I mean, if they have another funding source that they would be willing to use, then that's fine, too.
Well, we're requesting ARPA funds. So, that's part of what we're doing here.
And we would like, we are requesting that this is considered for your ARPA fund allocation.
And would we put any of our ARPA funds in?
I, um-
I don't think we offer that upfront.
I don't think we need to say anything about it.
It may come back to that, but we don't offer it.
Yeah, okay.
They're probably-
And the reality is, here, here's my perspective. The, this homeless thing is not the city versus the county, it is the county. And this, because homeless has no boundaries, it has, although our police officers have boundaries and the city has boundaries, homeless goes in and out and people go in and out. But it shouldn't all be within this confined area because it's just too much of an impact in one area. So, yes, three.
So, you're saying we'll take on a third of the problem, a third of the county's problems?
Correct.
Well, one of the, one of the issues is, we, all the, all the services are here. You can't stop the homeless from, from wanting to congregate where the services are, where, where these, where, that's what happens in cities. It's, it's, it's part of being a city that these things happen. We can alleviate it, but, but it's still gonna happen because they're not gonna live out on Newtown Road, five miles out. They just won't. There's nothing there. There's no, there's no resources, there's no services, there's no nothing. They're going to be here.
I think COVID has taught us that we can do mobile services. I mean, we've learned a lot in the last year and a half. And to say that we can't get services to remote places, I don't think is accurate at all.
But you're talking about the city being a place where they, where they, where it ends up. And that's why they, that's why they end up here. And that's, that's, that's a reality of being a city.
It's true.
So, um-
So, if El Dorado Hills then votes to be a city in a couple of years, they don't have to be part of the solution.
Did you, did you give a motion?
I did.
I'll second it.
I thought Mike did.
Did you? No, he didn't. Did you second that motion?
Uh, doesn't.
Okay. So, we have a motion that talks about, you changed it from five to three.
I said I would support that idea.
Okay. And I second the motion. Is there any further discussion on that? Do you have the motion?
Generally, yes.
Okay. And you'll, we'll refine it, but, yeah, okay. All right. So, any further discussion? All right. Roll call vote, please.
Sorry. Our, our, so ARPA funds are in it, right? We were saying that-
That, that was it. Yeah, they, they, we didn't specify.
No, this is a request for ARPA funds.
Yeah, we, we specified that we'd like this considered for, for ARPA fund allocation.
Right. I have that written down. What I put is a combination of ARPA and other, other homeless funding that is available.
The COC funding.
Gotcha. Okay, sorry.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brawley?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
No.
Councilmember Saragossa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
You're great, you're great.
I would caution you. This is the start of a conversation. And thank you all. I mean, this is, this is where it begins. It, hopefully, it begins. And we're gonna move forward with this. So, thank you very much, everybody for being here. At this point in time, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting at 5:56. Thank you.